Okay. That was quite loud. All right, it's February 25th. We're calling the Town Council Committee of the Whole Order to Meeting. We had some technical difficulties this evening going live with GMTV, but we are recording and I believe we are streaming at the moment, but it will be loaded up onto our site. Roll call. All are present except for Council Parker will be late. She has TVCCA, as well as Council Gajewski, who actually has an election this evening and may or may not arrive late, he said. Up next, Calendar and Communications. Council Mayor, do you have anything you would like to share?
I attended a meeting of the reconstruction of the Main Street in Noyang a couple of nights ago. They had their own meeting down at Palmer's. And then there's going to be another meeting tomorrow night at the firehouse. And that's about it.
And that's at the Noyang Firehouse? Do you have a time for that?
6:30.
That sounds good.
That's the town-generated public hearing.
Very good. Thank you. Council Boardland.
Thank you. I attended a gala for Sales Up for Cancer recently that was at the Marriott, so it was really a good event for our community. I also attended the Fitch High School. They had a concert for Black History Month with all different bands, jazz, and the chorus also sang. So it was really nice to be at the high school and listening to our youth. Definitely a big supporter of the music department. I've received several communications. I received a communication from Kristin Meany, actually two communications with concerns about the golf rates. And I believe she also emailed the council as well. Also received emails from Lauren Gothier, who was sworn in, not sworn in, who was moved forward from an alternate for planning and zoning with concerns and questions to the town manager about that appointment. She wants to make sure that she's taking, my understanding, asking the questions as to questions as to what happened with Mr. Fiftill and was waiting on a response. So I guess through the mayor to the manager, did we give a response to that or will you be sending that response out that she's requesting?
The town attorney had responded, as well as the town manager.
Okay, perfect. All right. And also, Mr. Fiftill sent out a long email, also looking for response from personal appointments. Is that something all council needs to respond to or are we responding? Like, I know he reached out to the town manager as well. Like, are we taking that up at all or did we review that communication and respond adequately based on the concerns in there? So, not sure who's taking that one up.
The last email that I saw was sent to the whole council.
Okay. So, in that email, he has concerns about how he's being overlooked, just like Mr. Pritchard was for planning and zoning, and addressing a lot of concerns with that fall under that. And I will submit at the next meeting the letter for the record. Those are the communications that I have. Also attended some Board of Education meetings, virtual and in person, since they are in their budget. And since that's about sixty-something percent of our town budget, I've been following that very closely just to be prepared because that's one thing I can have kind of done before we dive into our side of things. So, that's all I have for today, and that's it.
Thank you. Council Pacino.
Hold on, stop. I've got to remember how to do this. Give me 30 seconds. Do I hit clear, John?
Yes.
Thank you. No, that's wrong.
Just to let everybody know at home, Council Rusk is going to be our timekeeper for the evening. Thank you, Council Rusk. It's greatly appreciated.
I think I was supposed to hit reset instead of... My apologies. I don't do this often enough. Okay. And then hit repeat. Let's try it. Starts now. Hit clear. No, the clear goes down to zero. Okay, there we go. Sorry, thank you.
You got it?
I'm good.
All right, thank you so much.
Of course.
Council Pacino.
Are you ready?
I'm ready.
I have nothing pertinent to pass.
Thank you. Council Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I received the same emails that all other councillors received. And I also attended the Gonong Show last Friday with Council Pacino and his Tammy Delacruz, who's sitting in the audience. It was a wonderful show, and we had nine different acts. We had ninety people come. We had a full lunch, multiple different selections, and I think it was a lot of fun. Everybody had it. It's just a great job done by our Thrive 55. Did a fabulous job of organizing it and holding it, and I think everybody had a great time. So it was just, it was really good. It was a lot of fun. And I and Council Pacino and Ms. Delacruz were judges on it. So, we had a great time.
Great. Thank you. Council McBride.
Thank you. Numerous emails regarding personal appointments, handling of Jeffrey Pritchard's situation, Kevin Fiftill's situation, John Goodrich's situation, and Laura Gothier concerning with how those issues were handled on the Personal Appointments Committee. Also had some numerous emails and correspondence with concerns and over the cost increases at the proposed Shanakas' rates. And also received some communication regarding concerns over the budget losses due to the current administrative efforts. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Council Rusk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I received all of the same emails that everybody else received. Today is the special election for the 40th House District, so there is still time to vote. It is 6:52, and polls don't close till 8 o'clock, so if you are in the 40th District, I highly encourage you to get out and vote. On that same topic, I would like to say thank you to the poll workers. They work very, very hard on election days, and this is a special election, so it's not planned. So to everybody who helped with the elections, thank you so much. I did vote today with my family, so good luck to both candidates. And I also have been watching the Board of Ed meetings, especially the budget hearings, and look forward to continued information. That's it.
Thank you. I also had several emails regarding the golf rates, as well as some other, the same as other councillors' communications received. I've been watching all the Board of Ed budget meetings as well, as well as watching what's going on at the federal level and trying to figure out how it's going to affect our community. I also have some mayor communications that I want to share. I am appointing Shirley Mitsko to the beautification committee. At our next meeting, it'll be a town council meeting, always home, will be speaking at Citizens' Comments, and we will have a photo opportunity. She has requested this, and I said it would be a good time because she just wants to come and say a few words and get a photograph with us, so. All right. So up next is approval of minutes. I'm going to start with you, Council Rusk, because you're first down there. Approval of minutes, this is on page three of our packet.
I make a motion to approve the committee of the whole meeting minutes of February 11th, 2025.
Second.
All right, that was moved by Rusk, seconded by Pacino. Are there any changes? Council Rusk.
Yes. On the first page of the meeting minutes, it says that Economic Development Commission member Pantaya Amrits was at the meeting. She was not. The reason why that is important is because...
Which page is this?
It is on page three of our packet, page one of the meeting minutes. It's under Roll Call. And that is important because when we go into executive session, it states that she is, the motion was to include her, but she was not at the meeting. So it's on page three of our council packet, under Roll Call, second paragraph. She is the third-to-last person mentioned.
Gotcha.
And then on page seven of our packet, page five of the meeting minutes, it states in the motion that she is to be included in the executive session, which it was stated, so that is correct. But she was not at the meeting, so she was not in the executive session.
I agree. I remember, I recall that being read that way, but she was not present. Thank you. All right, seeing no other hands, we're going to take a vote on 2025-198, the February 11th, 2025 minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. That's going to pass seven to zero to zero. All right, up first is 2025-177. This is Community Speaks Out, Update and Use of Opioid Funds. The purpose of this is to give us an invite, you can come up to the microphones. This is to give us an invite and an update presentation. At the end of this, there will be no councillor comments or questions, so it's just simply an update for us. Good evening. Welcome. Can you introduce yourselves?
I'm Joe Delacruz, President of the Union Speaks Out.
Tammy Delacruz, Vice President of the Community Speaks Out.
Travis Paul, House on Board and Help with Love.
Okay. You want to give us an update?
Well, thanks for having us, first of all. And this is, I don't want you to feel overwhelmed because we did give you a lot of information tonight, but that's for you to go home with, to really look over. I wanted to also include the fact that, you know, we took heed of your advice last year, and our board member here, Travis, put all this together. It's funny what you can do when you go through your graphs and see what you've done for the year and actually see the work that you are doing. We are having an open house that's going to happen this Saturday. That's March 1st, from 2:00 to 4:00, and we'd love to see everyone there. And I don't want to forget because May 31st will be our ribbon cutting, and we will formally request that, you know, obviously if anyone would like to be there, we'd love to have you. You know, as far as the money goes and what this council did last year, in the last few years, it really, I think as a group, for us, with our nose to the grindstone and you're working hard in raising money to provide services, to have a body like you come forward and kind of give us the boost that we needed. The building, the update that I'm giving you tonight is we did purchase a building. I don't know if you guys have seen that in the news at all, but it was on tonight on Channel 8 and it was in the paper. So we're very proud mostly of our elected officials really getting behind us because we're going to be able to provide things. Each day when we serve somebody new, something else comes up, like what we could do and how we could move forward. And it really was made possible by this opioid settlement fund. And so, you know, we have been going to other towns and speaking, and if you look around other councils, some have spent zero of those dollars. We're going to use what you guys have done as the example of what can be done in these other communities. So you should be really proud of yourself. We're proud of our council. We're proud of the work we've done, but it's hard to put really a pulse on when people walk in and see this building now. We're going to have roots. And some of you have, I don't think everyone has been there, I think the mayor got to stop by and just see the early progress. But this Saturday is something we're going to really look forward to, you guys coming and saying, take a look at all these numbers, and then come see us because we're going to be back in September, obviously. We just, and we know that you started late and you have a lot of folks in the audience here to go through, but we just want to make sure that you know what we're up to. Tammy, I wanted to talk to you real quick about a letter that's in there.
Just wanted to let you know, there is an impact letter that's attached. We could probably have several of those attached, but this person in particular had asked if there's anything, any time that he would really like to share his story or at least share the impact that we've had on him. So he did send us some communication for you guys tonight, it's on the back. And I just want to let you know, because we do deal with the youth, and I remember, I just heard Council Boardland talk about the youth and how important it is, and we are very proud of our youth program, prevention program. And we have a young woman who just left and kind of graduated out of it, when she is going to Yukon right now. And I'm just going to read her quick text to me. She calls me Queen, so just bear with me. She says, "Hello, Queen. I hope you're having a lovely Friday. I just wanted to let, thank you again for winning, writing my recommendation letter. I really do appreciate it, and I should start hearing from the programs in a couple of weeks. Also, I've compelled to tell you, to let you know that I am currently applying to be a substance risk peer health educator on campus." So that's just an example of the impact when we have a youth program that can get together that has been impacted by addiction, the changes that they can make in their own lives. So I just wanted to share that with you. So, again, thank you for everything you guys have entrusted with us and what it has brought to this community. And I just want to let you know, our people see and they know that how important you guys, the bullet you play. And when some of the councillors have come to some of the events, the other day you came to, the mayor came to the bowling event to check in, and everyone gets excited. They're like, "The mayor's here. Oh, my gosh, the mayor's here." So I would highly encourage you to check out our website. You're always welcome to come to a recovery event because when they know that someone cares in the community, it goes really far with them. So I just want to thank you again. So I hope to see you Saturday.
All right. Thank you all.
If you have any questions, you're welcome to call us directly.
That's wonderful.
Two o'clock.
And thank you for the update, and I have the invitation here, and I will see you on Saturday between 2:00 and 4:00 p.m. at 124 North Street. Thank you and congratulations on your new building, and I can't wait to see it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Up next in our packet is 2025-162, Alteration of Ascenic Road, 1130 River Road. This is on page 10 in our packet. And Council McBride, would you like to take that one?
Certainly. 2025-162, Alteration of Ascenic Road, 1130 River Road. I'd like to make a motion to recommend a resolution to schedule a public hearing on April 1st, 2025, to solicit public input regarding the alteration of River Road.
Second. Moved by McBride, seconded by Boardland. Good evening. Would you like to introduce yourself and give us a synopsis?
Yes, I'll do so.
Of what's going on on River Road.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening. For the record, my name is Bill Sweeney. I'm a land use attorney and a partner at the law firm at Tobin Carberry over in New London, Connecticut. And as always, it's a pleasure to appear before this body. I represent Robert and Angie Butler, who own a home at 1130 River Road here in Groton through their revocable trust. Joining me tonight is Rebecca Nolan. Rebecca is the Butler's Licensed Landscape Architect and the person that's responsible for creating the plan that's before you this evening. We are here this evening seeking approval from the town council for alterations and improvements within the River Road right-of-way, specifically the relocation of a driveway apron to improve a sightline. As you're aware, River Road is a designated scenic road under Chapter 13.5, Article 5 of your Code of Ordinances. And pursuant to Section 13.5, 123, we're required to obtain an approval from this body for any modifications proposed within the town's right-of-way after a public hearing, provided that we should demonstrate good cause. My clients purchased this property back in 2020 with the intention to use it as their retirement home. The property consists of a 1.07 acre parcel, which is just north of St. Patrick's Cemetery. It sits on a low spot on River Road, and both to the north and the south, it is between two elevated hills on the roadway, which negatively impacts sightlines and also road drainage. In 2021, my client hired an architect to obtain town planning and zoning approvals for alterations to the property, namely renovations to the existing residence, as well as the relocation of the existing driveway access onto River Road. The original driveway actually hugged the south edge of the property and ran along a stone wall, which held up an embankment dividing the property from St. Patrick's Cemetery to the south. The driveway exited out onto River Road right next to the cemetery property line, and which was also at the base of a steep hill, as well as a curve on River Road. As a result, the existing sightline, if you were pulling out of that driveway looking south, was extremely restricted and, quite frankly, created a dangerous situation with cars coming north on River Road and with cars using that driveway. As you were coming up River Road and over the hill at the cemetery, the Butler's driveway was basically hidden from you by the topography and the curvature of the road. It is literally an accident waiting to happen. The plan shown, the plan that we showed to Planning and Zoning, my client showed to Planning and Zoning in 2021 shifted the driveway to the location shown on this plan in the center of the property. And this would dramatically improve the sightlines, both left and right, on River Road, and it would put the driveway in the middle of the two hills, which is the safest possible configuration. The change also allowed us to pick up stormwater that was running off the road and collecting in that low spot. There's no curves in this section of River Road, so the stormwater would basically pour onto my client's property and erode it. And so it gave us an opportunity to redesign and regrade to capture those in rain gardens on either side of the new driveway access. While the 2021 application was approved by Planning and Zoning, at no time was my client aware or informed that ascenic road approval was required by this commission. In 2024, after the renovation of the road of the home had begun and land clearing for the driveway, relocation started, my clients hired Ms. Nolan, and Ms. Nolan immediately advised them that you need to get a permit or an approval from this town council to officially move the driveway. And so upon their modest state, and when they learned about this issue, their first step was to stop all site work. They called me and said, "Listen, I need, we need your help to try to address this. We were unaware of this requirement." And so they directed me without any notice or notice of violation or demand from the town to voluntarily avail themselves of the proper process. There's been no actual work in the town right-of-way, except for the apron itself. We did clear some overgrown mature vegetation on our property, which we're allowed to do, took out a dying tree, and again, we regraded to deal with the stormwater issue. My clients are proposing to install a dry stacked stone wall on their property outside of the town right-of-way along the property line, which will be really attractive, really supplement what the cemetery has right now. And they also put in new trees, new red maples, to supplement the existing trees behind that stone wall. We also have fully designed vegetation plans that Ms. Nolan designed for the rain gardens behind the rock wall. Again, this is all on our property, but it will create a much enhanced visual screen at the front of the property, something much better than what was there previously. As I said before, the plans will include those rain gardens. We'll pick up the drainage and properly deal with it on our property. And again, all the work we're doing is going to be outside of the town right-of-way. The only thing that is really within the purview of the town council for the scenic road is our connection into River Road. It's that apron, what you call, that connects our driveway to the travelway. And so that's why we're here tonight, and that's why we're seeking the approval. We think that the work we're doing on our side of the property line will drastically improve the appearance along River Road, but most importantly, we're going to address that safety issue with the sightline looking south along River Road. My client wants to apologize to the council for the mistake, which was innocent, for not applying to the scenic road approval prior. That was a failure of their previous professional, but we want to address the issue and bring the property into full compliance with you before we proceed with any further work. I just would cite as well that our plans have been reviewed by both Deb Jones in the Planning Department and Greg Hanover at DPW. Greg asked us to put some additional notes on the plan, which we have done. So again, in conclusion tonight, and I'm trying to be brief, my clients are certainly legally entitled to access their property and access it in a safe way. And we think we've carefully vetted the new access and the new improvements on our side of the property line. This will be a safer access and a more attractive access for the town along this important scenic road corridor. So I want to thank you for your time and attention tonight. I understand that the town manager has recommended scheduling of a public hearing, which is required by the ordinance. We'd ask you to schedule that. Ms. Nolan and myself are available tonight if you have any questions or seeking any clarification on the changes to the driveway location. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Burt, we have some new councillors on here that may not understand the scenic road situation on River Road. Would you like to explain it a little bit on how this works?
Yeah, I think he kind of did explain it, but yeah, essentially, if you're going to disturb, I can actually send it to everyone later, but if you're going to disturb anything like along the roadway, alter the roadway significantly, trees, walls, stone walls especially, that kind of thing, then it comes to you. And the expectation is unless you, you would only turn it out if there was something you found significantly impactful to the roadway and otherwise, you know, we'll move forward and certainly should get a public hearing.
All right. And this was set up through a previous, like, long ago council, working with people on River Road who wanted this, is that correct?
Yeah, before I arrived, yeah.
Right, before I arrived as well. And that they wanted this so that any change to their road, they'd have to come before the council to get approval. Okay. Any questions? Council Boardland.
Not really questions, more statements. But, you know, thank you for coming. We see you on these types of things, and I appreciate, thank you to the owners for, you know, correcting the process once, you know, that's all you can do is make it better once you find out that it's not right. So, and I travel that road very frequently and walk it very often as well. I have a lot of friends that live along that stretch and in Old Mystic and on the other side, so I, you know, have been watching all the developments that's happening on that road. There's been a lot actually around the lower bend and everything, but I'm very familiar and, you know, just look forward to hearing from the public to see, you know, hopefully neighbors or whatever that have concerns will speak out, and I think it's, if they have any concerns. And, but I do appreciate the opportunity, you know, you bringing it before us. And, you know, I think so far from what I saw, there looked like there were some really good, some good changes. And, you know, I'm definitely all for replanning trees, especially in that area. So any, and also a big component of rain gardens, which is, so thank you for that design as well. But I, we'll wait to see what happens for public comment, and again, thank you for coming before us, and good luck to the new retirement home there. You know, hopefully, you know, serves them well and they have a good, it's a great location, so. But thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Yeah.
Council Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Sweeney, for the presentation. I just have one question. I noticed that this driveway, the end of the driveway has like stone blocks that go into the road. Does that, I guess, care that it's not going into any town property, that's just staying on the driveway?
Yeah, exactly. So we have a paver strip right before the property line. That is on our side of the property line. It does not extend into the town right-of-way. In fact, all of our improvements, the stone wall, the new plantings, the rain gardens, the driveway itself, it's all on our property. The only thing is that curvature apron that connects in. That's the only thing that's actually within the scenic road. If you read the scenic road ordinance, your jurisdiction is modifications and alterations within the town right-of-way. In fact, the ordinance goes further and says, "Nothing in this ordinance should be construed to prevent somebody from doing things on their side of the property line." But I, we shared that information because we wanted to show you our commitment to trying to beautify the corridor. Even though it's not on town property, we want to make sure there's a nice, beautiful screen between River Road and our, and the house that's along the Mystic River that my clients are going to retire in. So I think it's going to be really attractive, and that new dry stacked stone wall really will continue the beautiful stone wall at the cemetery. Right now, there is no stone wall, so we're adding that at our cost along the front edge, really to beautify that. And there's so many beautiful stone walls along River Road, I think this really adds to that character.
And you talked about, through the mayor, you talked about water collects. That's the low spot. Is that low spot about where the driveway is?
Yeah, exactly. But what we have, what we've done is we've been able to, through grading on our property, direct that water to both the left and the right. So it's sort of hard to see on this plan, but you can see the large, deciduous trees on either side of the accessway. Right behind those, we have some additional plants that we worked with Greg Hanover. We have a depressional area that's fully planted. And so right now, water just sort of runs in a stream, and it will erode, it cuts down to the, I guess that would be to the north, and it cuts a gully out of the road because there's no, there's no catch basins on River Road. So what we're able to do is now capture that, hold that on the property, allow it to infiltrate, and it prevents erosion and sedimentation flowing off of the road and basically flowing down toward the Mystic River. So from my perspective, this is a win for safety, but it's also a win for environmental protection.
So which way does that driveway tilt? Is it tilting towards the road or tilting towards the water?
It's...
The driveway?
The driveway itself, actually, it will go down toward the road, but then it sheds on either side to those basins, or to those rain gardens.
To the rain gardens, so.
And again, all of the design of this, that was designed by Ms. Nolan, has been reviewed and approved by Greg Hanover.
Okay. All right. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I don't see any more hands, so we're going to take a vote.
Thank you so much for your time tonight.
On, to recommend a resolution to accept and file, I'm sorry, wrong page. A motion to recommend a resolution to schedule a public hearing on April 1st, 2025. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?[1767.16] Abstentions? All right, that passes seven to zero to zero. It's very exciting to hear that somebody wants to retire in our community, so. Have a good night. Thank you for coming. Up next is 2025-178 FYE 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. This starts on page 18 of our packet. Counselor Jones, do you want to take that motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item 2025-178 FYE 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Motion to recommend a resolution to accept and file the FYE 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, ACFR, and the auditor's reports. So moved.
Second. Goodbye, Jones. Second to my board of lot. Good evening.
Good evening.
Would you like to introduce yourselves and then give us the big giant presentation? Because I think our, just to let you know, our packet is like 320 pages, and I think most all of it is you.
We know.
Re-audited.
Dee Morrison, Director of Finance.
Melinda Cruanes, Audit Manager at CLA.
Stephen Gross, Audit Principal at CLA.
And Vanessa Rosito, Audit Principal at CLA.
Okay, great.
Great. So I just, thank you, everyone, for having us tonight. So I was the principal in charge of the audit for 6/2024. I am retiring at the end of this year, so I am handing over the reins, so Steve Gross and Melinda will do the presentation tonight. I just want to mention, though, that we were here not long ago presenting the June 30th, 2023 audit, and I want to commend Dee and her finance staff and also the Board of Education's finance staff, because it's very hard to issue an audit in June and then turn right around and work on the next audit and issue it on time. So I think everybody did a great job, so just want to thank them.
All right, so if everyone has their packet, we'll start on the first page of the slides. The second slide is just a legal, just our little legal statement about the slides. React your own leisure. On the next slide, we have the agenda. We're going to talk about the terms of the engagement, the executive summary, the financial highlights, both the federal and state single audits, governance communication from us, your auditors, to you, the council, who's charged with governance, and upcoming GASB Onto the next page, the terms of the engagement.
Can you hold just a moment so we can all get on the same page as you?
Yes.
Does anybody, what page are we on in the packet?
240.
All right. Hold on just a moment, please.
Behind all that.
Powerpoint, yes.
Keep on going.
Do you want to take this? I'm looking for 240 with that, rather than me trying to figure it out.
All right, I'm all caught up. Thank you, thank you for that.
Sorry about that.
Yeah.
Okay. Perfect. So our engagement is to look at the financial statements and express an opinion on those financial statement, on those basic financial statements in accordance with GAAP. We also expressed an opinion in relation to the schedule of expenditures of federal awards and the state schedule of, schedule of expenditures of state financial assistance.
Madam Mayor, point of information.
I'm sorry.
Can you please not use acronyms?
Can you say what they are instead of the acronyms? Thank you.
We express an opinion on compliance related to major federal award programs and major state award programs. We provide a report on internal control over financial reporting and compliance with laws, regulation, contracts, and grants, which is governmental auditing standards. And we provide a report on internal controls over compliance related to major federal programs and major state award programs. Onto the next slide is our executive summary. So on those financial statements, we provide an unmodified opinion that we issued on those statements, which is the best available opinion that can be issued. We had no findings reported on internal controls and compliance. For the federal single audit, we issued a unmodified opinion again, which is the highest level opinion on the major federal programs, and we had no compliance findings or significant deficiencies in internal controls over compliance. And it's the same for the state single audit. We had a unmodified opinion and no compliance findings or significant deficiencies in internal controls over compliance. The next slide, we're just showing a quick, like 20,000-foot overview of the governmental activities of the town. As you can see, there's not much difference between 2024 and 2023. There were some decreases in the outflows, which is related to your pension, OPEV obligations. Also, there was a slight decrease in your liabilities that just relates to the payment of debt service on your, on your principal debt. Moving on to the next page, this is a high-level view of the governmental funds on a modified accrual basis. As you can see, the general fund increased around $9.8 million, so that increased your fund balance paid to the general fund. The ARPA fund had an increase of $65,000. The capital improvements fund had a $1.3 million increase, sorry, a $2.5 million increase. And then the aggregate remaining, which is the rest of the funds in combined, had a decrease of about $851,000. Overall, the town had an increase of $11.6 million to fund balance. For the financial highlights, which is just the general fund budget as a whole, revenues came in, 11.8 million over budget. When I looked at the budget to actuals, the vast majority of it related to property taxes, which was about $6.8 million favorable variance. There was also a $2.4 million increase in the bank interest compared to what was budgeted, and the pupil impact aid also increased around $2.2 million. For the expenditure side, there was $2.2 million under budget, which is always good. When I dug into those numbers, it came to three line items. General services, which was around $303,000 under budget. Community services, which is parks and wrecks for the most part, was under budget by $433,000, and education came under budget by $427,000. For long-term liabilities, your net pension liability, which is calculated by an actuary, decreased by $5.9 million to $33.2 million. The net OPEC, which is also calculated by an actuary, also decreased $5.9 million to
So I will do kind of a high-level summary of the federal single audit and the state single audit. For the federal single audit, the total federal awards expended during the fiscal year was $16.9 million. The major programs that we tested of that $6.9 million are listed here. There were four for federal. It was the ARPA, the ARPA grant, Impact Aid, Child Nutrition Cluster, and Title I grants. And as Steve noted earlier, we did have unmodified opinions on the major program compliance, and we had no internal control findings on the major programs. On the next slide is the state single audit results. The total state awards that were expended during the fiscal year was $35.1 million. Again, we had actually four programs that we tested for the state single audit. It was, or they were the Enhanced 911 Grant, the Early Care and Education Grant, LOSEF, which is a local capital improvement grant, and the municipal purposes and projects grants. And again, we had unmodified opinion on the major programs' compliance and no internal control findings on those major programs that we tested. So overall, very clean federal and single audit this year. Are there any questions on federal state audit before I move on? The following slide is our auditor's communication. So we, as your auditors, are required to communicate certain disclosures to you, which are, you know, those charged with governance, the council. The first communication that's required is to let you know if there's any new accounting policies or standards that were required to be implemented during this fiscal year. And this year, we did not have any new accounting standards, which was kind of an ice break. You know, in the past few years, I think there's been GASB standard after GASB standard that we had to implement. So we'll talk about what's coming on the horizon, but for this year, there were no new accounting standards that we had to implement. As far as significant estimates, we are required to communicate to you higher uncertainty estimates, mainly because of the potential for management bias. So here we list, you know, net pension liability, net OPEC liability, and then claims for medical heart hypertension and the workers' comp liabilities. And while, you know, you have actuaries and specialists producing those calculations, they do rely on input from management, including, you know, census for the pension and OPEV, assumptions that management technically, you know, owns those assumptions. So we do have to do additional testing. So we review qualifications of the specialists. We look at the assumptions and methodology, methodologies and see if there's any changes. We test the census, so, so we make sure we're comfortable that we see no indication of management bias in these significant estimates. Following pages of continuation of our required communications, there were no disagreements with management. Management did not consult with any other accountants during the year. There were no corrected misstatements. We do note three uncorrected misstatements, and I will go through those. GASB 87 releases, which I believe you saw last year. So this was the GASB 87 lease standard, which required to bring leases on the balance sheet liability. Management, you know, assessed the, you know, impact of that statement and determined that it was not material to the financial statements and therefore was not recorded. That's the same situation for this year as well. The construction in progress item here is related to expenditures that occurred in last fiscal year that were actually brought on the books as an asset last year. So they were included in construction in progress, and they were not expended last year. Management reviewed that this year in fiscal '24, determined that those should not have been included in your assets and wrote those down, so they, they flowed through the expenses during fiscal '24. Because it's a fiscal '23 expenditure that's flowing through fiscal '24, that's why we have to list it here. But again, management determined that it's not material to the financial statements, so that's, that's why it's not recorded. And then the last item here is the Board of Ed payroll accrual. And this entry is due to the way that the board accrues or not accrues for the final payroll for fiscal '24 in June. So administrative and staff employees who work during June and get paid in July, technically those salaries were earned in June, the expense should be in June. So you should be accruing for those expenditures in the fiscal year in which they were earned. The board, this is every year situation, so every year, they determine that the, because the contracts for these individuals start July 1st, they want the new pay, the new salary range and new salary expenditures to match the fiscal year in which the contract lands. So they do not record that accrual. Management reviewed, you know, year over year, fiscal '23 and fiscal '24 determine if it's a material, you know, difference between the payroll accrual that should have been there and, you know, fiscal '23 and fiscal '24, again, determined that it was not material. So that one is just listed on our uncorrected misstatements in the governance communication. Are there any questions on that? Because I know that's kind of a lot.
We have speaking time, so we wait till the end and then we have.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
And we lastly note that there's no independence issues for fiscal year '24 audits.
I have a point of clarification.
Okay.
Under the Board of Ed payroll accrual, can you just restate that? That, because it ends, you said they hired the employees that worked from June through July for the summer and the expenditure. Can you just restate that one more time, just for my clarifying notes?
Yes, so it's for administrative and staff, not teachers. From our understanding, their new salary is effective July 1st. So technically, that first pay period they get in July is up with the new salary that they're getting. Management decided that they wanted to have the salary, the higher salary that that individual is being paid in the contract year for that individual and not in the fiscal year when that salary was earned.
And my last clarifying question to this, just for my notes, is that something normal across the board when you see all towns, or is that individual?
It's, no, I mean, in accrual base, on accrual basis, it should be recorded in the fiscal year in which it's earned. And so that is why it is a uncorrected misstatement.
Thank you.
Okay. On the next slide, we have upcoming GASB standards. So fiscal year '25, which is, you know, the next audit year, there's Statement 101, which is the compensated absences. And this standard basically clarifies guidance on certain types of leave that needs to be accrued for in the compensated absences. So this will reduce inconsistencies that the prior GASB 16 caused, so they're hoping for greater clarification and consistency across with this new GASB standard. So obviously, we'll work with the finance department this year to make sure that gets implemented correctly. Statement 102 is certain risk disclosures. That is for, it just requires additional disclosures for things such as credit risk and interest rate risk. It probably won't have a material impact. Management assesses that, and we'll be implementing it if necessary. And then further down the horizon, for fiscal '26, there is Statement 103, which is the financial reporting model improvements. And this will make some changes to the financial reporting, including some M.D., some management discussion and analysis changes, some changes to proprietary fund statements, amongst other updates with how things need to be presented. And then GASB, yes, GASB 104 would be disclosure of certain capital assets, and that just establishes requirements for how, how certain assets need to be disclosed. And that is all we have for you.
Counselor McBride.
Thank you. I just, I, one question on compensated balance and absences. Is there any relation to sick time in that for next year? And can you, maybe I missed it. Can you explain, the reason I'm asking is because if we're going to be reviewing union contracts and things of that nature, we want to make sure we understand the liability because it could be increasing, right? With this, what's the percentage? Is it like a certain percentage of the sick time?
Yes, that would, and that would be management's assessment of it. I know, Vanessa, if you wanted to.
So, yeah, so this, this standard actually expands what is going to get recorded. Previously, what is recorded is what the town is going to have to pay if, if an employee severs service. This GASB standard is requiring municipalities to look at absence balances for all kinds of leave that could be taken in the future and not necessarily paid. So if you, if you don't get paid for sick time for, for example, it wouldn't be included in the liability currently, but if you could take five days next year, a liability is going to have to be recorded for the five days.
That's kind of confusing.
It doesn't make any sense to me.
Yeah.
But that's what the standard says. So I think we, we're going to have to go through all the union contracts and all of the other contracts to see all the various leave balances that employees have, whether they're, you know, able to get paid for them or whether they just accrue them and then they kind of fall off. So it's going to be a little bit of a exercise to kind of analyze all of these contracts.
Yes, what it sounds like, and maybe I'm summarizing, and maybe this isn't proper, but it sounds like if we don't have a contract that allows for the payout of sick time, in an employee leaves, we don't have to book the liability. It's only if we have something in our contracts where we pay 20% or something like that, we have to book the liability.
So, no, it's actually the opposite. You're going to have to record the liability whether or not you pay it.
So everyone's sick time liability will be booked from now on?
Correct.
And you may not have to pay it, though.
It's, right.
What if an employee severs?
It's just going to be like a paper transaction, if you will, because the town is not going to pay the employee, but then when the year goes by, you can reduce the liability.
Okay, so it's not a cash flow?
Right.
Issue, just the liability. Okay, thank you for that explanation. One other question, the Board of Ed payroll accrual from a materiality, do we know the dollars of that just because the Board of Ed's getting $427,000 back and they're not lapsing funded? If that's material, it would reduce that amount. And if that's material, it would reduce that amount going in there, nonlapsing.
That's on the budgetary basis, the 427?
Yes.
This, it might be a little different, because this is on the accrual basis.
I'm just trying to think of, is it 5,000? Is it 100,000?
Yeah.
Or, you know, just.
Understood.
So we're showing that the liability at year-end should be around $262,000.
I'm sorry, 262?
262.
So I would consider that material. Maybe not in the grand scheme of things, but from the nonlapsing fund.
That's why we reported it to you, because it's below our paying materiality, but it's both clearly trivial. So we considered it a required disclosure to you.
Thank you for that. And then I have other questions. It's not really for them, though, just comments on the financial statement. Is that something I do now?
You've got a minute 36 going.
I've got a 30 now.
I guess, I'll talk quick, because I don't have enough time, I guess.
You've got a second turn.
Oh, that's true. My only real comment is, from the fund balance perspective, and we've talked about this quite frequently, we currently are at 40 million, 368, 26.3. That's after the 5 million put into the '26 budget. So I just want, I think we all need to be aware that, at least in my opinion, this fund balance is quite substantial. I think we need to consider it as we're going into budget negotiations, because the total fund balance, including on a sign, is 46.9 million. This is after the 5 million we've allocated to next year's budget, which is 30.6%. So it's just pretty substantial, and I think we want to consider what, and if anything, we can do with those funds. If we get in an issue with the government not funding us properly, I think there's substantial funding there. And again, a note, as I mentioned before, the 427,000, that's dropping to education. Maybe there's something we should look into, because 262,000 of that may not, they may not be entitled to it if it's booked a different way. And John, I just had a question. It seems like property taxes were, we received 6.8 million, and I'm not sure if you know that.
That was been a comment. That's that issue where EB's new construction came online a year earlier than expected. It's a one-time thing.
One-time, so we can't plan on that going forward? Okay.
It's been built in after that. And '25's budget this year has already been built in.
Okay. And that's all here for now. Thank you.
Counselor Bordelain.
Thank you. Welcome, and thank you for your presentation. I do appreciate it. I know it's a lot of work, because it's definitely a lot of work for me to review it all. So I spent, I felt like I didn't have enough time. I got out Thursday, and just kind of working my way through it. But anyway, but I found the time. You know, I do share some of the concerns with my counselor, Counselor McBride, as far as our fund balance amount. And, you know, but I, you know, just, it's a large amount of money that we have in that particular account, which is a little concerning when we're increasing taxes and looking at other ways to fund things and, you know, kind of holding back such a large amount from the community that's, you know, kind of there for the rainy day, so to speak. But, you know, that's one of my concerns. Also, the Board of Ed payroll accrual about, what was that number that you said it was 262,000? Is that what you, to make sure my numbers, is that what should have been added, but wasn't added?
That should have been what was accrued at 630.
Can you just say that again, one more time?
That should be accrued at 630, 2024.
Okay, so that's what you mean, the June versus the July, like with that new starting, where they're employees, they don't.
That's what was incurred, like, if you ended June 30th, that's what should have been expensed on the 2024 side compared to the 2025 side.
Can you repeat the number? I'm sorry.
262,000. Where, but, so where did that money, then, where did they report that?
They reported it in 2025, so it would show up in your 2025 financials.
I just want to be clear, my notes, I'm assuming that, but I want to just hear.
It's just a timing thing, kind of? It's just like, what side are you on?
Well, I mean, for me, it's bookkeeping, right? I mean, I don't do my own homework like that at my house, or else I'd probably run, I'd be really off, like expending stuff and then taking it. That's like, you know, like those check stop places, in my opinion, you know, like you, people who need it, right? They pay a large percent to do that, but it, you're never, you're catching your, up, up, up. You know, that's, to me, it's not good money management. That's just my take on it. Plus, for me, I think it doesn't represent what actually was happening in that year. So then my next question, then, would be, where's the $262,000 that, like?
It gets expensed in 2025.
Right. So it just, it just seems like you're always behind a little. It just doesn't add up to me.
Yes.
Raw numbers don't, that doesn't make sense. So it's just, I see that as a bit of a glitch. Construction in progress, what is your recommendations on that?
We recommend management to review their fixed assets at 630 and determine which ones are going to actually become capitalizable and moved over to fixed assets, and what should be expensed, and so at a later period. Sometimes it's hard to ascertain if a project's not going to make those capitalization thresholds. So that's why sometimes that happens.
And how many did we have?
You asking the dollar?
It was about $1.1 million that was expensed, was 2024 expenses, sorry, 2023 expenses that were expensed in the 2024 financial statements. So in 2023, they were capitalized to an asset, and then in 2024, they were expensed on the government-led financial statement.
Okay. And the GASP 87 leases, can you speak just again to that?
So those leases are just related to essentially having a right-of-use asset. These are considered operating leases, so if you have a 12, a greater than 12-month lease, you will have a lease liability and a right of use of that asset. A lot of times, it could be a building is a common example, or a rental of a piece of equipment.
Okay.
And that was around $600,000 for the right-of-use asset, and $683,000 for the liability.
Got it. Okay. And that could, and that also would be important because of insurance, too? Wouldn't that be, like, number-wise, or?
Usually wouldn't affect your insurance. Usually that would be included in the town's insurance policy, but I would obviously reference management for the exact insurance coverage on those.
Like, that's all I have right now. I appreciate everything and all the work that you guys are doing, and I thank you for, you know, all the explanations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much. Through the mayor, so on the executive summary page, the federal single audit and the state single audit, those are, like, the federal is, are, but in fact, they, child nutrition and title, is that right? It's just done in two different places? Yes. Where, if I wanted to see what those numbers were, can you give me a location in this document to, just, like, what are they?
Yes, you want the dollar amounts of each grant? So in your packet, right before the PowerPoint presentation, there's probably a 13-page report.
This one here?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Does it say federal single audit on the cover? There's one that says state single.
That's, is it state single?
Okay, so the federal's probably for that.
And this says federal?
Yes.
Okay.
So there should be a listing of all of the grants on page.
Page five.
215 in the agenda.
215?
Yes.
Okay. So that lists everything that we have in federal, and then there's an equivalent one for the state.
And there's equivalent for the state.
Those are the expenditures of all of the federal grants in the federal single audit, and then all the expenditures of the state grants.
Of all the different things. So page five is the federal.
And that would be page four and page five for the state.
Page four and five. That are all the states. Terrific. Okay. Great. Okay. Because that's all, those numbers are always hard to find together. So now we can see them all. On that, no, I don't, I think it's an enormous amount of work, so. Thank you, and thank you for putting it all together. I don't think I have. And the last question is just, when you speak of, when you say you speak to management, management on the town side is the town manager, and?
It would be either the town manager or the finance director.
Or the finance director. And equivalent on the Board of Ed, the superintendent or the business manager.
Superintendent and the business manager, yes.
That's what you mean by that. Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, so I wanted to ask about, there's no audit notes at all? Like, no findings at all, if anything? So I know last year, we even had a note saying that we should do some kind of fraud alert, where there was like an anonymous telephone call in line or something like that. And it had been on there for years. That's gone now? Is that, like, is that not a requirement, or is that been taken care of, or did it just fall off?
It was not on this year's. I think we just thought that it had been on there for years, and nothing has been done, so we just.
And then, when it came to some of the uncorrected mistakes, is there an issue maybe that, I can't speak to how some of it was done. I'm just going to take, because the Board of Ed payroll accrual issue, this has happened before, and it became an issue that was discussed at previous times. Is there an issue where they're thinking it might be a cash instead of accrual?
No, it's just, in accrual accounting, you have to account for all the expenditures relative to that year. So sometimes expenses are paid after the fiscal year-end, so you have to do a calculation. If you have an invoice that spans three months, and it spans over the fiscal year-end, you have to do a calculation to figure out how much pertains to the old year and how much pertains to the new year. So that's sort of what this was.
Right. And then it was mentioned about the contract starting on July 1st, they're, they had a contract.
Because the salaries.
The salary contract. But wouldn't you, I mean, I do payroll, so when somebody has an increase in pay, and it starts on that day, that's the day they start with a new.
Right.
You don't do a retro to all the previous part of the payroll. So that's what I'm sort of confused.
No, the payroll was correct. It's just that the accrual was not recorded in the fiscal year, but it was not material to the financial statements, so it was not recorded.
Okay. I understand what you're saying. I'm just, I don't know how much the contract really put into play on how you're doing your accounting. You see what I'm saying? Like, if you have a contract that starts on the first, it starts on the first, but the way you're doing your accounting in your books is a totally separate type of situation than how you're going to address your contract. Okay. So there's no notes, which is, I don't ever remember in my whole time being here, having absolutely no notes, so it's very surprising, and I'm, I guess I'm pretty excited about that, I guess. You found no real kind of issues. Overall, can you say what you think the financial status is financially of our books?
I can't. I can't really say that. All I can say is.
Counselor Bordelain, I'm asking them, not you.
No, I think someone asked last year. I was just saying, no, I didn't answer.
I know.
You just go point on the numbers.
It was just.
All I can say is that we've issued a clean opinion on your financial statements, which means that your financial statements are correct in accordance with governmentally-accepted accounting principles.
Okay. All right. So I thank you all for coming, then, because I saw no other. Counselor Bordelain.
Thank you. I have another question about the 262,000. So in a lot of ways, then, for me, when you look at the 2025 budget, it's not properly really representing what was actually happening in that year. Is that fair to say? Because you're paying the 262,000 from 2024 into that number for 2025.
Kind of gets offset, just because, you know, next year is going to have the same problem at 630, 2025, right? So they kind of offset each other, but.
So if they wanted to correct it in this coming year, like, what would be, is there any recommendations on how they should do that, to not do this?
All they have to do is make the accrual for the year-end six entry, essentially.
So just make the entry, and that's clear enough.
And then you'll just have, like, a little bit of excess expenditure, essentially.
Right.
And you'll be caught up going forward.
Perfect. All right. Thank you. That's all I have. Thanks.
Jumping off that, you're saying that the previous year, they were allowed to do the same thing? I thought that was clarified and cleared up with, like, grant money, because they were over budget.
This just relates to the accrual for just the 630 year-end, not related to what was accrued last year.
But what you're saying is, it's sort of offset, because they did the same thing, like, year over year?
Well, it will get, it will be offset next year.
But it's starting this year, going forward, but the prior year, at the end of that audit budget.
It wasn't.
They were over budget, and they had to offset it by a grant to clean up, clean it up.
Right.
So it's actually, this is the first time they're doing, being allowed to basically go forward this way without correcting it. And so now, going forward, it should even, I understand what you're saying, it'll even out the playing field going forward. I get what you're saying. But it's not like this has historically happened. So, thank you. Counselor McBride.
Thank you. I guess the one thing I want to say is, I think it's a little bit different, because this year, they have the ability to utilize, put that money into their own nonlapsing fund. So I don't know if there's anything we can do now, or if it's too late, but I think that's different, because they're going to have 427,000 in their nonlapsing fund, when they should only have 165,000. So I'm not sure if there's anything we can do now, but I think it's something the council should consider during budget season, because it is different than has it been in past years. So, and maybe it does true up next year, but it's still, they're kind of getting out, getting some free money, I think, in my opinion, so. That's all.
Point of information?
Your question?
I just, through the mayor, through, if I can, Counselor McBride, when did the nonlapsing fund start? Because I know that's a newer account. When did that start in relation to this occurrence? That's what I'm trying to figure out in my head. Because they haven't always had a nonlapsing fund either.
Yeah, my understanding is it started with this audit.
Started this. All right.
I thought it started last time, because they put money into their nonlapsing fund last time around. They have money currently in their nonlapsing fund from last budget.
It's from this budget, from the '24 year.
It's from the '24 year.
Yeah, fiscal year '24.
Okay, gotcha. All right. Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Madam.
Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor McBride, are you all set? Counselor Jones.
Thank you. I know, or believe, that a significant portion of federal money passes through states, and states pass that money on to, to Boards of Ed. So we have just, you know, $35 million has passed through. Is there any way in this number to figure out what proportion is federal money as opposed to state money?
So you're looking at the federal single audit?
I was looking at the state, but I have the federal here, too.
So the state single audit represents the state-funded amount, and the federal single audit represents all the federal. So on the federal single audit, on the schedule of expenditures, you'll see, it'll say, pass through the State Department of Education. It'll say, you know, the United States Department of Education passed through the State Department of Education.
Oh, right here. Passed through the State of Connecticut Department of Education.
Correct, yeah.
Right. So the original source of the funds are federal, in the federal single audit. The original source of the funds are state, in the state's.
So, good, okay, I think I understand. So what you're saying, no, okay, so I see right here, so it's 1.7 million is the federal pass-through amount, if I read this correctly. Passed through, through the State of Connecticut Department of Education.
That's just for this.
That's just for the idea grant. So if you look farther down, you can see that it's around.
What page are you on, Counselor Jones?
214.
Like, $6 million is passed through the Department of Education.
Oh, right here. So, so my question is, so that 6 million, that's all of the pass-through money from the federal, to the federal. Is that 35 million from the state? Is that 35 million with that 6 million, or 30, or is that not included?
It's separate.
It's separate.
Yeah. That's just federal money. That just comes through the state.
That comes through the, through the state. So in effect, from the state, we have $41 million. 6 million of it is federal, and 35 million of it is state.
So the federal single audit has $16.9 million of expenditures. That's all federally funded money. The state single audit has $35.1 million. That's all state-funded.
So that's, that's completely state.
Completely state, correct.
Doesn't have any federal money in it. Doesn't have any federal money in it.
Correct.
And then, even though, so the, the 16 million or just in case, just looking at the educational parts here, the 6 million, the state manages or delivers that money, but it's really federal money.
Right.
So, just, I'm just looking out at what? We don't know. The confusing situation that we may be in soon, trying to determine how much money we could have or not have. It could be this, it could be this money if they decided to kill.
The 16.9, yeah.
Or, or the minimum, the six, the 6 million.
Yeah.
Yeah, 6 is just the education piece.
If you're worried about the Department of Education.
I'm worried about the Department of Education. So, it could be 6 million dollars is the amount. If we're sort of thinking as we're just sort of.
So, if it was just the Department of Education, it would be 11.9 million dollars in total. Because some of the money is passed through the State of Connecticut and then there's some direct money as well, which is the impact aid. That's also.
Okay.
But that's directly from the federal government.
Okay, so it's really 11?
So, it's 11.9 million that comes from the Department of Education.
Okay.
Half of it comes through the State of Connecticut's Department of Education. The other half is directly from the federal government.
From the federal government. And then, outside of that, completely separate from that, is just state funding, which is 35 million.
Right.
Okay. Okay, that's.
Lot of different sources.
Lot of sources, but also just as we're looking at budgets and budget season, you know, what money are, what monies do we feel more at risk than other monies? And that might be the money that we feel at risk. I mean, from my point of view. Okay, that's great. That's very helpful. Okay, thank you. Almost it.
All right, thank you. I just have to jump off on that 6.2 million with the impact aid that comes directly from the federal government. Mr. Burt, or even the auditors, is there a way to actually look and see where this is online? Like, what the numbers that they're, like, to find out what we're projecting for maybe in the future? Or is there somewhere online that we can find this number?
Not that we've found, we find where it's recorded once it's issued, but nothing that says what it's budgeted for.
So, there's nowhere, like, like, can we? You'd have to really dig into the federal government somewhere to figure out where this money.
I don't know how far in advance they decide on these things. And some of it, some of it from readjustments from earlier auditing of other years. Is that right? Yeah. So, some of it's not even for current years. It's when does the audit get done for previous years? So, it's not always, you know, it's not so straightforward.
All right.
Like, my guess, when we saw the amount for last year that we received where we got a little bit higher, that's probably some earlier audit. It's probably the base amount plus some earlier audited years.
Okay. I don't see any more hands. Anybody else? Last chance. She's leaving, she's retiring, she's never coming back.
You're stuck with me, sorry.
All right. I guess we will take a vote on 2025-178-FYE 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. All those in favor of accepting it? Say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. That passes seven to zero to zero. Thank you all for the hard work and for getting us all caught up and helping get that all settled. And I appreciate everything and enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And thank you for all your years of coming here and doing our audits. That was, it's much appreciated. All right. It is eight o'clock, so before we start our next very large presentation, let's take a break. About 10 minutes. It's eight o'clock and we'll take a recess.
Good evening. We are back. It is, I believe, eight twenty. I'm sorry for the long break. All right, up next, two zero two five dash one nine seven, Shenacosa Operations Analysis Findings Presentation. This is in our packet beginning on page two fifty-nine. Would you like to introduce yourselves and then I guess we're going to have a presentation?
Good evening. Mark Berry, Director of Parks and Recreation. Joining me this evening is Todd Goodhue, golf pro, and Eric Morrison, Golf Course Superintendent. In 2024, Shenacosa hired J.J. Keegan and team to conduct an operational analysis of Shenacosa. The analysis included a lot of, a number of one-on-one interviews, meeting with stakeholder representatives of various golfing communities, elected officials, and municipal staff. Community engagement also included an online survey, which we received over nine hundred surveys back. All of that information, along with the onsite visit and all the material that we sent to J.J. Keegan and his team, they put together a series of recommendations. And the Golf Advisory Board and the Parks and Recreation Commission have reviewed these recommendations and weighed those into the proposed rates, which we will be discussing a little bit later on this evening. And this presentation is intended to provide the council with an overview of the current challenges and opportunities for improvement within golf course operations. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to J.J. Keegan.
Thank you, Mark. It is such a pleasure and an honor to be with you tonight. I've got some good news on several fronts. First, we had seven inches of snow here in Colorado on Friday, but we're in the sixty degrees now, and hopefully you'll enjoy the good weather in the next couple of days. Second, the good news is that Shenacosa is really a great asset. Under the supervision and leadership of Mark, Eric, and Todd, it is providing a great recreational amenity to the citizens in the town. A third piece of good news is that after tonight, all of the emails you're getting about the rates will hopefully cease. So what we're looking to do tonight is that there's a, rates are correlated to the financial goals of the golf course. Our role is merely to present the financial information to you, but it's incumbent upon you as town council to make the following decision with respect to, what is your goal? Is it to, operational deficits are okay and you're willing to fund out of the general fund, the capital that's required? Or are you going to set the goal for Mark, Eric, and Todd to be cash flow neutral and that you're willing to fund all of the capital improvements out of the general fund? Or three, are you looking for the golf course to fund such cash flow that it can handle all of the capital requirements such that no money is required out of the general fund? That is the essence of the question that you face tonight based on your decision of rates. And then I parenthetically add, for your consideration, is it appropriate to allow the consumer to set the rates that they are willing to pay regardless of the financial implications for the town? So what we're going to do inside of twenty minutes, talk about the team, the approach, the business model, the facts, the implications of those facts, and the recommendations, and questions and answers. I've been very fortunate. We've been doing this for twenty-five years. I've visited over six thousand courses in sixty-four countries. That's led to, we've written a series of seven books on the best way to run and optimize creating value for golfers on a foundation that optimizes the financial return. The vast majority of our business is working with municipal golf courses. And so I, as a proprietor, assemble a team of experts to guide us through the creating of a strategic plan from all of the demographic information from Argus to accessing the National Golf Foundation information, to getting weather playable days from weather transit to help us determine what are the right rates for season passes. And then we had Brad Klein, who's a Donald Ross known expert. He was persuaded by the Golf Course Architect Society for his work on Donald Ross, Tim Garrish, who is an architect of record for Shinni, and Doug Smith to look at the course and determine what was necessary. Well, that's resulted in a lot of deliverables that is available for year review and has been downloaded online. Well, our approach in looking at a golf course is a function of seven steps. What are the demographics? The age, income, ethnicity, population density, and relationship to the experience that are being created. Second, what's the weather? Should you be open all year? Or are there only sufficient playable days that I think Shinni is proud is it's the only course in the New England area that's open all year? How's technology being used? Have we got a good database? Are we doing pro marketing? Are we capturing credit cards? Do we know all of the people that are coming and how often season passholders are playing? There's a set of metrics. You're all familiar with current ratios of two to one, quit ratios, one to one, debt to equity ratios. Well, we've developed a series of benchmarks that measure the financial efficiency of a golf course that I'll share with you tonight. The golf course is only designed by the architect on the day it is built. It requires constant investment of upwards of a quarter of a million dollars a year exclusively what the clubhouse requires to maintain a good playable golf experience. Operations is a series of thirteen customer touchpoints from the time the golfer thinks are coming to the course, to arriving, to playing, to eating, to departing. And then, as Mark said, he surveyed and we had nine hundred customers respond. Well, in creating a set of rates, we first look at the macro financials. And what we clearly heard was that the, notwithstanding the audit, which was great that I listened to the presentation earlier tonight, is that there's all kinds of concerns based on all of the capital that's required within Parks and Recreation. The guiding principles for the golf course is it's a self-funded enterprise. The revenue is generated through green fee, season passes, cart revenue, and lease income from par four. When you look at the national park and rec model and making a decision on rates, community benefits come out of the general fund. Partial subsidy is summer camps, learn to swim lessons, and youth sports. But where an entity in a municipal setting is for individual benefit, golf, adult sports leagues, concessions, and rentals, it should be fully consumer paid so that the entity cash flows and there is sufficient cash flow to pay for capital. We did the survey, and here's where the residents who visit Shinni come from and live. Throughout all of the Connecticut area, it is well thought of as a golf course. But what's happening is net income is rotating faster than revenue is increasing. You can see while revenue went from a million four to a million six, the revenue and expenses went from two sixty-six to ninety thousand dollars. You're only at five percent of EBITDA. The annual revenue, your season passholders have priority on getting to the tee sheet, and they pay nineteen percent less than green fee holders, and they are able to play twelve months a year where in the other areas of Connecticut, the season passes only cover eight months. The excessive percentage paid in fringe benefits, when compared to third-party management companies, the fringe benefits are fifty-four point nine three percent. One of those benchmarks, if fringe benefits exceeds thirty percent, the concept of privatization comes into play. And what this screen shows is that the fees could be paid to a third-party management company of a hundred thousand dollars, and that there'd be two hundred thousand in fringe benefits, and that the net savings to the city would be a hundred thousand dollars if the course was privatized. And I should point out that over thirty percent of municipal golf courses are privatized. When we looked at who the golfers were in the survey, their income is forty-nine percent greater than the residents', and the demand to play the course exceeds the supply of available courses by twenty-six percent. In the survey, those nine hundred people said that their average income was a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. Eighty-six percent were male. The average age was fifty-four, and they played thirty-nine years, thirty-nine rounds a year on eight different golf courses. So what we concluded is that the management model is flawed, that the Golf Advisory Board and the Park Commission leading to creates a conflict of interest in setting the rates. Eric is very talented, and with Todd's help, they should be preparing and proposing the rates of the revenue and the expense estimates. The current seasonal labor hiring practice has restricted the applicant pool. Eric's hands are tied in terms of bringing in high school or college students or studying agronomy and finding the right summer help to even empty such things as the wastepaper baskets. He's precluded from operating equipment, and I would say that in all the superintendents we've met, Eric's really good. And his vision and what's possible is really encouraging us about the potential of the golf course. There's limited merchandise in the pro shop. There were over fourteen thousand emails and working with the marketing department, and that when we sent them out, seven thousand of them were invalid, and that there's no revenue modeling of the projections of what should be occurring. The operational reporting is also flawed. In theory, every person that comes to the golf shop should be registered, whether it's a season passholder or a golfer. So therefore, we know who's playing, how often, what they're spending, who are our best customers, so the basic metrics are not being tracked. If we look at the season passholders, and if we say there are four hundred and thirty-nine that would generate over six hundred thousand in revenue, the budget only says four hundred and twenty thousand for the current fiscal year. So this was an item that I think merits further investigation. Is it accounting between two fiscal years? Or is there, in fact, because of the incomplete reporting of season pass rounds, is there something that deserves further review? There were seventy-three thousand tee times reserved, but only thirty-seven thousand played, and nearly twenty thousand rounds were blocked prior to tee times due to tournaments, leads, low-paying customers had the highest priority. Now, think about that. If you own a business, would you not give priority to those who are paying the most to visit? Well, the way it's structured with it eight days in advance versus the public at seven, the people, meaning the season passholders, pay the least, yet they have the highest priority. It's a business concept that is foreign to most across the country today, and that when reservations are made, they're not secured by credit card. I can assure you today, on the municipal golf courses across America, that not only are credit cards being held, they're being charged for no-shows. And that because of the lack of the reins, there are limited opportunities. And as part of our written report, we outlined the ability to put in a range by to the left of seven, to the left of nine, and that the ROI and the learning opportunities and the ability to practice in a heated environment is a capital investment that I make. And as I teasingly said to Mark and Eric,
...present the financial information to you, but it's incumbent upon you as town council to make the following decision with respect to what is your goal? Is it to operational deficits are okay and you're willing to fund out of the general fund, the capital that's required? Or are you going to set the goal for Mark, Eric, and Todd to be cash flow neutral and that you're willing to fund all of the capital improvements out of the general fund? Or three, are you looking for the golf course to fund such cash flow that it can handle all of the capital requirements such that no money is required out of the general fund? That is an essence of the question that you face tonight based on your decision of rates. And then I parenthetically add for your consideration, is it appropriate to allow the consumer to set the rates that they are willing to pay regardless of the financial implications for the town? So what we're going to do inside of 20 minutes, talk about the team, the approach, the business model, the facts, the implications of those facts, and the recommendations and questions and answers. I've been very fortunate. We've been doing this for 25 years. I've visited over 6,000 courses in 64 countries. That's led to, we've written a series of seven books on the best way to run and optimize of creating value for golfers on a foundation that optimizes the financial return. The vast majority of our business is working with municipal golf courses. And so I, as a proprietor, assemble a team of experts to guide us through the creating of a strategic plan from all of the demographic information from Argus to accessing the National Golf Foundation information, to getting weather playable days from weather trends that help us determine what are the right rates for season passes. And then we had Brad Klein, who's a Donald Ross known expert. He was persuaded by the Golf Course Architect Society for his work on Donald Ross, Tim Garrish, who is an architect of record for Shinni, and Doug Smith to look at the course and determine what was necessary. Well, that's resulted in a lot of deliverables that is available for year review and has been downloaded online. Well, our approach in looking at a golf course is a function of seven steps. What are the demographics? The age, income, ethnicity, population density, and relationship to the experience that are being created? Second, what's the weather? Should you be open all year or are there only sufficient playable days that I think Shinni is proud is it's the only course in the New England area that's open all year? How's technology being used? Have we got a good database? Are we doing pro marketing? Are we capturing credit cards? Do we know all of the people that are coming and how often season pass holders are playing? There's a set of metrics. You're all familiar with current ratios of two to one, quit ratios, one to one, debt to equity ratios. Well, we've developed a series of benchmarks that measure the financial efficiency of a golf course that I'll share with you tonight. The golf course is only designed by the architect on the day it is built. It requires constant investment of upwards of a quarter of a million dollars a year exclusively what the clubhouse requires to maintain a good playable golf experience. Operations is a series of 13 customer touchpoints from the time the golfer thinks are coming to the course to arriving, to playing, to eating, to departing. And then, as Mark said, he surveyed and we have 900 customers respond. Well, in creating a set of rates, we first look at the macro financials. And what we clearly heard was that the, notwithstanding the audit, which was great that I listened to the presentation earlier tonight, is that there's all kinds of concerns based on all of the capital that's required within parks and recreation. The guiding principles for the golf course is it's a self-funded enterprise. The revenue is generated through green fee, season passes, cart revenue, and lease income from par four. When you look at the National Park and Rec model and making a decision on rates, community benefits come out of the general fund. Partial subsidy is summer camps, learn to swim lessons, and youth sports. But where an entity in a municipal setting is for individual benefit, golf, adult sports leagues, concessions, and rentals, it should be fully consumer paid so that the entity cash flows and there is sufficient cash flow to pay for capital. We did the survey and here's where the residents who visit Shinni come from and live. Throughout all of the Connecticut area, it is well thought of as a golf course. But what's happening is net income is rotating faster than revenue is increasing. You can see while revenue went from a million four to a million six, the revenue and expenses went from $266,000 to $90,000. You're only at 5% of EBITDA. The annual revenue, your season pass holders have priority on getting to the tee sheet and they pay 19% less than green fee holders and they are able to play 12 months a year where in the other areas of Connecticut, the season passes only cover eight months. The excessive percentage paid in fringe benefits when compared to third-party management companies, the fringe benefits are 54.93%. One of those benchmarks, if fringe benefits exceeds 30%, the concept of privatization comes into play. And what this screen shows is that the fees could be paid to a third-party management company of $100,000 and that there'd be $200,000 in fringe benefits and that the net savings to the city would be $100,000 if the course was privatized. And I should point out that over 30% of municipal golf courses are privatized. When we looked at who the golfers were in the survey, their income is 49% greater than the residents and the demand to play the course exceeds the supply of available courses by 26%. In the survey, those 900 people said that their average income was $123,000, 86% were male, the average age was 54, and they played 39 rounds a year on eight different golf courses. So what we concluded is that the management model is flawed, that the Golf Advisory Board and the Park Commission leading to creates a conflict of interest in setting the rates. Eric is very talented and with Todd's help, they should be preparing and proposing the rates of the revenue and the expense estimates. The current seasonal labor hiring practice has restricted applicant pool. Eric's hands are tied in terms of bringing in high school or college students or studying agronomy and finding the right summer help to even empty such things as the wastepaper baskets. He's precluded from operating equipment and I would say that in all the superintendents we've met, Eric's really good. And his vision and what's possible is really encouraging us about the potential of the golf course. There's limited merchandise in the pro shop. There were over 14,000 emails and working with the marketing department and that when we sent them out, 7,000 of them were invalid and that there's no revenue modeling of the projections of what should be occurring. The operational reporting is also flawed. In theory, every person that comes to the golf shop should be registered, whether it's a season pass holder or a golfer. So therefore, we know who's playing, how often, what they're spending, who are our best customers, so the basic metrics are not being tracked. If we look at the season pass holders and if we say there are 439 that would generate over $600,000 in revenue, the budget only says $420,000 for the current fiscal year. So this was an item that I think merits further investigation. Is it accounting between two fiscal years or is it fact because of the incomplete reporting of season pass rounds, is there something that deserves further review? There were 73,000 tee times reserved, but only 37,000 played and nearly 20,000 rounds were blocked prior to tee times due to tournaments, leagues, low-paying customers had the highest priority. Now, think about that. If you own a business, would you not give priority to those who are paying the most to visit? Well, the way it's structured with it eight days in advance versus the public at seven, the people, meaning the season pass holders, pay the least yet they have the highest priority. It's a business concept that is foreign to most across the country today and that when reservations are made, they're not secured by credit card. I can assure you today on the municipal golf courses across America that not only are credit cards being held, they're being charged for no-shows. And that because of the lack of the reins, there are limited opportunities and as part of our written report, we outlined the ability to put in a range by to the left of seven, to the left of nine, and that the ROI and the learning opportunities and the ability to practice in a heated environment is a capital investment that I make. And as I teasingly said to Mark and Eric, why don't the three of us form a partnership and see if we make a proposal to the city to build it and take the revenue because the ROI is so good? So here are the metrics. Based on what's being spent on the maintenance of the golf course, the green fee should be $70.39. The rate is at $55. If we look at the median household income within a 10-mile radius, it would suggest the green fee should be $69.49. Notice the coincidence of these two heuristic numbers of how close they are. The fringe benefits are too high when we see them over 30% and would suggest privatization is appropriate. The salary expense resulting is at 57% in a municipal environment. When it's over 40, that says that that requires further review. The maintenance expense is at 50% because of the fringe benefits and to Eric's credit, he only has a minimal staff of six on operating a course a year round. And so it comes back to the nature of the fringe benefits and that the ROI on the earnings is too low at 5.8%. But what, as all of this has resulted is that from the lack of cash flow and credit, you've got a million dollars in capital reserves. If we were to bring the cost, course current today with a new irrigation system, it's going to cost over $3 million with redoing all of the bunkers and building a short game area. You would, if we were looking to do a renovation of the golf course, over $7 million would be required. And that's before, we look at the clubhouse and here's a picture that we took that for the last year, we've been trying to bring inside the facilities and one problem from asbestos to the uneven floors. And so that could be another $3 million to get the clubhouse. So in summary, expenses and the net income is erosion. Season pass fees are too low. The reservation policies are flawed. The fringe benefits are too high. It's a flawed organizational structure because of the undue influence of the Golf Advisory Board and the Park Board and there's $7 million in deferred capital. So for 2025, we sat down and I really want to thank Margaret Hurst, who is the head of the Golf Advisory Board and Mike, one of the finest players that play at Shinni. They sat down and they said, here are the rates that we put into the plan on 11/26/2004. Season pass is at 2,800. Well, over the last 90 days in meetings with the Golf Advisory Board, with the Park Commission, you can see that the rates that are now being proposed are 1,900 to 2,000. You can see that the rates have been significantly reduced. The basic green fee rates that we thought that $60 and agreeing with Margaret and Mike was the appropriate rate. Now, you'll notice that we said that maintenance and the ability to pay, that the rate should be at $70, so we were suggesting $60. The consensus of the last 90 days said that it's 55. So we modeled and so we created a financial projection and based on numerous scenarios. And what Margaret, Mike, and I had come up with in saying that we think that the golf course could cash flow if there's 40,000 rounds at $60, with the season passes at the price we outlined, you do 2.2 million in revenue, you generate nearly a half a million dollars, and you could put a quarter of a million dollars of capital aside. But based on the rates recommended by the consensus of the Park Advisory Board and the Golf Advisory Board, you can see at $40,000, you're going to lose at 40,000 rounds and that the differential between the rates that were agreed on November 26 and today, it's almost $300,000 difference when you look at the rate structure. So when we look at this, what's wrong? If those rates are adopted, you're likely to break even or certainly not make sufficient money to cover capital expenditures and the deficit's going to have to come out of the general fund. There's 453 season pass holders. Most municipal courses have 100 to 150. Private clubs only have 360 golfing members. The season pass program, if I operated the golf course, would be canceled. A lottery system is being considered for making tee times and if that is in fact implemented, the public's going to be denied access to be able to book a tee time. Season passes are only going to be purchased by those who held them in 2024 and the non-residents are going to be precluded. Reiterating, the season pass holders pay the lowest per round and they have priority access. Nothing is secured by credit card. There's no penalties for short shows, so if I'm a season pass holder, I book a course and I show with two or three, that's money lost. And other municipalities around the country, one, the person pays for the rounds that are missed, and two, if it's a frequent occurrence, they're denied access to being able to make a reservation. And so there's significant opportunities to really put Shinni on a financially stable basis. So the first recommendation, based on my belief in Eric, Todd, Mark, John, that I think the management model that they should prepare, go to the park department and come before the town administration and town council, that the Golf Advisory Board should be shut down. Second, retain a third-party management company to operate the course. All of the things that we've outlined would be cured. Implementing a contemporary POS system. One of the most popular things, and I showed a blog, that six municipalities from Steamboat to Eagle to Fossil Trace, which is the city of Golden, they put 100% of their tee times online at the beginning of the year. I had lunch today with the city of Arvada and they do the same thing. And if you want to make a tee time beyond the seven-day window, it's a $10 fee for the ability to book. And they save the times for leagues and tournaments and outings and the ladies and the men squad. This just giving the public the ability to pay. The city of Golden makes $600,000 in extra money by the way they do the dynamic pricing and selling all of the tee times for the year. Implement a no-show policy. Cancel the season passes and implement a loyalty program where the golfers are getting 10 and 20 and 30% discounts based on an initial fee. I'd suggest suspending the capital investment because you're spending money on the bunkers only and a couple to three to four are getting done annually. And then by the time you get through them all, you have to come back and do them again versus doing them all at one time and being able to maintain them. It's a cycle that is not very productive. A website should be redesigned and the renovation of the clubhouse. Also, the storage facility, I would literally do that and see if we could move the carts in there. So that's a quick synopsis. What questions can I answer for you?
Counselor Boarder.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. This is my second time hearing you live and I've rewatched a few times to take more notes. You know, there's a lot of things that I can agree with, but then there are some things I can't agree with and I only have a few minutes. So the things that I can stand with, I do think there should be fees for no-shows. I mean, where can you operate a business in this country anywhere where if you don't show up, someone should have to pay a fee? I can get behind that. You know, if you don't show up to your hairdressing appointment, that's a whole hour slot that they could hire someone else to come in and they're making no money for that hour. So I also think our system is definitely outdated. We do need a proper infrastructure. You know, we are a submarine capital of the world. We're located in an area with a high density of transient folks as well as people on business trips and it would be nice to be able to get off the plane. We have Mystic down the road. At the hotels, we should be advertising and saying, hey, come play at Shinni. I mean, people ask all the time, but people didn't even know I was downtown Mystic. They're like, where can we golf? And I was like, besides the casino? I was like, come to Grodd. They're like, where's the Flyers? They should be in our hotels, right? There should be a link, you know? Hi, welcome to the Whaling In, let me book your tee time for you, right? Like, you know, so more advertisement, I can agree with a better antiquated page. All of that first-century technology, I'm all for. Making sure that we're bringing in advertising our asset. I am concerned about the rates increase, how drastic they're going. I know that we do need to increase, but I do not believe at this percent. And looking at this, you know, structure is just, it's just too much for any one person. I understand the goal, but we can't put it on the backs of the people who have been supporting the golf course all this time. But I do think we should be tracking what type of incomes coming in, what credit cards are coming in, what people are buying, what, you know, like, you know, that structure and being able to pay by phone and go online and book your tee times and all of that, I think is great, cancellation fees. But I do have concerns, and I've heard loud and clear from a lot of folks, they are not ready to eat the numbers that are presented. Now, does everything go up? Yeah, I think there should be a modest raise, increase, but I do not think it should be this high. I have my first question. The golf carts, do Parks and Rec own them? Who makes the money on the golf carts?
We lease the golf carts and charge a fee for that.
Who do we lease them from?
Club car. And it's usually a five-year lease. Yeah.
Okay, so we lease them and then we get a fee. So they get a fee and then we get a fee.
Yeah, we pay them 50, it's about $58,000 a year.
$58,000.
About $58,000. And we bring in about $235,000 in cart fees.
$253 last year.
$253 last year.
A year.
That's per year.
Okay, I guess to the person who did the survey, is that the gold standard? Should we own our golf carts and manage them? That's my question.
No, lease, the lifespan of a cart is four to five years. You've got the gas carts that don't create the right ambiance, that's why fixing the shoulder and going to electric carts with GPS could be able to command a higher fee. Most carts today are going for $25 per round, especially when they're electric with GPS. But I really appreciate, if I can make the point, we are, our goal was not to say these have to be the rates, but in interviewing all of the people on council and the Park Commission, it was clear that the message was the golf course has to not only cover its operational expenses, but it also has to create the sufficient capital. And the town council, I heard consistently, wasn't willing to invest of the amount of money that would be necessary in capital to maintain the course and it should be consumer-funded. And so it was based on that.
I don't mean to cut you off, but I definitely wasn't surveyed as a council member. So who, I guess through the mayor, was surveyed that said these increases, I guess, because I was not surveyed?
Every counselor was invited. You may not have scheduled a time to go speak to him.
So, but his opinion is that all the councils, so you should say the people that showed, the counselors that showed up, because not everybody, that's a broad statement. I just didn't want that to be, but I'll take my next time after because I wasn't part of that statement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Senator Mayor. Thank you. Thank you. Can't think what your name is. JJ. Thank you very much for doing the survey and thank you, Mr. Berry, for initiating all of this. I noticed you have a projected revenue of $628,000 on the sheet, the sheet that you gave us.
Rate increases.
Yes, and as I told you earlier, that, I worked on that sheet this afternoon. I got it out and noticed there are a couple of errors on that sheet and I apologize for that.
That's okay. I just, I'm wondering what is the annual revenue of the golf course? Is that number roughly correct?
The annual revenue?
The target should be between 1.7 and 2.1, depending on the rates you select.
I can't hear that number.
So our revenue for FYE 24 was 1,623,000.
Okay.
Our projected revenue for FYE 26 is 1,872,000 against expenses of 1,801, which means we would net $71,000, which is, well.
So in the ideal world, could you be somewhat self-sustaining at the 1.8 million? Would you be able to do the capital improvements and things that you want?
If we're netting $71,000 a year, no, we're not self-sustaining as far as capital improvements. I mean, we're, we've got close to $7 million over the next five years. So $7 million divided by 71 is, what, 100 years?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm going to come back to a question I have asked, I think over the last couple of years, the same question, which is improving your tracking system, your point-of-sale system and having, be able to capture data and money from people, from the customers. And what's really disturbing to me here is you have a 73,000 tee times that were reserved and only 37,000 people. And I'm, every modern system, if I go to a movie theater and I get a movie ticket and I buy a ticket and if I don't show up, it's on me. And I think as the recommendation from JJ is, you know, capturing that money, putting down, you buy a ticket, if you don't show up, that's basically your problem. Maybe there's a window in there for, you know, rain where you need to reschedule or something. But just taking, but just take the numbers that are in this report and just use $50 a round, just sort of in the middle, that's $1.7 million of lost revenue that you're not capturing in some way. Now, I'm assuming that 73,000 people aren't going to come, but 73,000 people reserved to come to the golf course.
No, I think the 73,000 is the number of potential reservations that could have been made.
It says here they were reserved. So I, my encouragement is, and I did just look up to see what, and I know.
Can I please ask you to hold? If we could all, these pages are not numbered, but the title of this page is operational reporting flawed. And the numbers that he is stating is very clearly there right in the middle.
Let me explain that we went into the Chelsea system and looked at all of the reports and there was a report that of those total tee times, 20,000 were blocked for early morning times for events, for leagues, but the total number of blocked times was 73,000. I think it was 607, but what's 30,000 people actually showed. It's one of the ways that you would block a sheet in advance. And so is the number of 73,000 in terms of the capacity of the golf course and the weather playing trends plug and report, the capacity of Shinni is about 50,000 players, presuming a March to a November golf season, and that should be the target, not the 73,000. Most golf courses, 73,000 is also the capacity. Golf courses today are playing at 70% of capacity, which would be about the 50,000 is the realistic number for rounds.
Okay, so let me just.
Between 13, you know, that'd be about 650,000 in incremental income.
So I'm just going to take 25% of that number. Let's just say it was 10,000 people that reserved. Maybe that's a more realistic 30, the extra 35,000 people, if you just subtract those two numbers, is probably not realistic. But let's just say, take 10,000, that's half a million dollars of lost revenue just because their system, and I don't know whether the Chelsea system can take reservations and can take credit cards, but if he's, JJ's indicating not, but just looking up online, there are many, many systems, golf reservation systems ranging from $99 a month to $400 a month that I would highly encourage you to implement. I mean, I own seven e-commerce sites. This is not hard. And it can be done, it can be done quickly. But I encourage you to address this loss of revenue that you are having and this may significantly improve your revenues problem and give you a lot of extra money. So I don't sure exactly why you're not capturing this stuff, but.
Well, the current Chelsea system, you can't capture that information. But I do want to tell you that we have started the process of putting together an RFP to go out and search for those software companies that can, that can perform those functions. The process to go through an RFP is rather lengthy and at this point, trying to do it for this year, I think would be pretty disruptive. And, you know, trying to get this done by April would be, would be a real challenge given the process that we have to go through. But we are working towards that. And actually, one of the goals that the Parks and Recreation Commission had identified, one of the seven, five or seven priorities was having a system in place for next, for next year.
I, looking, just reading of the different systems that are out there, it doesn't seem such an onerous task and I might encourage you to either do something in parallel and get that going. I'm sure JJ can recommend a system to, to just go and do it, so.
Counselor, let me defend Mark here. If you, if the town council was willing to do a sole source, there are four firms under $15,000, it could get a system implemented. Would it be disruptive in the month of March and early April? Would it be disruptive in the month of March and early April? The answer is yes. But the governmental process of having to issue an RFP, waiting the sixty to ninety days for the responses to come in, then interviewing, then negotiating a contract, putting up the requirements, performance bonds. I spent twenty-five years working with municipalities, and unfortunately, the process of procurement is difficult. And so I'm very supportive of Mark here, whereas if you and I owned the golf course, we'd have it installed on two weeks from Friday.
I'll take my next questions.
Thank you. I'm going to jump in here, because it was said earlier that the council that showed up and gave their interview and how they talked, and I was very clear, and I will make it very clear here today, I am not in favor of privatization of this golf course. I am not in favor of that. I will say it over and over again. There were ideas of implementing driving ranges and all these other things, and I, and putting up fences down the road so that the balls don't go into the road that we've never had before. These are things that I said I was not in favor of. I am not in favor of replacing par four with a commercial restaurant. I'm not in favor of this. When it came to, well, how do we pay for some of these things? Well, I explained. The town council usually pays for things in CIPs, for some of the bunkers and, I don't know, sand traps, all these things. And last year, we didn't, we weren't able to do it because there was a very tough budget season. Probably going to head another tough budget season this year. Do I want the golf course to be self-sustaining? Yes. Did I say we could raise rates? Yes. But you know what? I'm not looking to do it on the backs of our residents with a big giant jump. My thought is, the system you're talking about, get it in place. Do it, have it so that people that are, you know, reserve it, they pay for it, and it says it right here on your piece of paper, that tee times reservations were not secured by credit card, and no shows were not penalized. That's a problem. That's an easy fix. Let's start there. I am not in favor of, you know, they talk about these improvements on the golf course here, and it says holes one through eighteen. Haven't we already started improving these? Because since I've been on the council, I'd like to know how much we've spent on this golf course, including the golf course itself as well as the buildings. Joe.
The life of a bunker can be five to seven years.
No, I'm asking Mr. Burt how much we've spent. Do you know?
I'd have to look it back at it.
Mr. Barry, do you know how much we've spent?
I don't.
Anybody from the golf course, do you know how much we've spent?
Not off the top of my head.
I'm going to say there are years, years after years. We put in like three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. We're going to do this one and then that, these two different holes. I don't know if they've all been taken care of, but I'm probably telling you, I think, since I've been on the council, we put in well over a million dollars into this course. So when you say that there's one, like these phases, one through six, holes one through eighteen, some of these have been done. We've already paid for some of these. So I don't know where these numbers are coming from. So when we get to the next section, we'll have another discussion on actually the pricing. But I'm going to say, I don't know why, year after year, we've been the same thing over and over again. Why don't we have a new system? And I've heard numerous councillors on here asking the same things. Why don't we have a new system? Why? And like it's being said, for fifteen hundred dollars, we can do this. It's not a lot of money, and to reap the benefits from it is just so great. I don't know why we're not doing it. Mr. Barry, do you have something? Give me something.
I don't have, from what I've been told, the current system that we have, they have, they manage courses all across the country, and she said, I think that there was only one customer that actually charged it. She says it's a huge hassle for the pro shop to operate, to go back in and have to cancel all of those reservations. And if you make a change, so if you book a tee time for three people, and then you add a fourth, well, now you have to cancel that reservation, cancel the credit card, go back in and rebook it. I mean, there's a whole process, and that's what's being explained to us.
That's just for the Chelsea, though. Have you looked at other software?
No, we have not looked at other software. But, like I said earlier, we're in the process of putting together an RFP to do that.
Okay. And I'm not yelling at you today. I'm not upset about that. But the presentation makes it come across very different than the conversation that I had. So I just wanted to clarify and put that out there. Thank you very much.
Councillor Rusk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I'm going to try to do both of these at the same time, so please, give me some grace. First of all, thank you for the presentation. I am very much kind of going to piggyback off what the mayor said. I very clearly said in my interview, I was not in favor of privatization. There is a vast benefit to having a municipally-owned golf course. That being said, I think that our residents pay for a lot of this in their taxes, and it's like everything else that we pay in our taxes. Sometimes we use it and sometimes we don't. We don't all use our Parks and Rec system, but we have that option. And I think that it's really important that we don't overcharge our residents. So I'm concerned about the rate increases that have been proposed. And I know there was a resident who spoke to me about concerns about golf carts before nine a.m. for seniors going up, so I'm going to voice that, that that is a concern. And I would love to know how many, how much would that even increase in funds? That's going to be my first question.
We only have like maybe ten or fifteen senior folks that play at that time during the week before nine o'clock. So it's not a big impact. There are those that play always during that time, and so they would be impacted quite a bit. But as far as revenue goes for the golf course, we're really not talking about a lot of money.
So I guess, give me your thoughts on what the proposal is here. You're the ones who are here twenty-four-seven. What are your thoughts on this proposal, if you feel comfortable saying that?
Well, I think he's put together a financial picture that unless there are changes made to how we operate, the golf course is going to slowly decline in the services that it provides, given the course conditions.
And I can appreciate that, and I can appreciate the fact of raising rates. I just feel like the proposal here had been to raise everybody's rate to the same amount. And when you have a resident or a municipally-owned golf course, I think it's important to maintain residents get some sort of a discount, whether that's a ten percent discount or what that looks like. I feel like that is very important for our residents, to make sure that they, they're not getting taxed for this as well as, as well as being charged extra to go. I always compare it to Eastern Point Beach. People ask why it's more expensive for town residents who are not city residents to go to Eastern Point Beach. Well, Eastern Point Beach is paid for under city taxes. So city residents get a discount to go there. I think city resident, or town residents should get a discount to go to Shana Cussett Golf Course. I one-hundred percent agree, and thank you for sending out the RFP for a new system. I think that is long overdue. I agree with charging people who don't show, one-hundred percent. What are your thoughts on privatization?
Well, it seems pretty clear that the council is not interested in doing that. So at this point, I think it's a moot point.
Okay.
You know, he's, I think, presented a picture where it looks like there's an opportunity to bring down costs. And, you know, he's doing what he was hired to do, was to look for opportunities now. You know, we may not all agree on the implementation of those, but he's done what he was supposed to do, and.
How many full-time and how many seasonal employees do we have at the golf course?
Well, the maintenance department has five full-time employees. Myself makes six. The customer service has one full-time employee and four part-time employees. And then we hire seasonal rangers, which I believe we have eight now. And then I have budgeted for three seasonal groundskeepers in the summertime. Those don't always get filled, but the money is there to hire three.
I'm sorry, just clarification, how many rangers?
Eight.
Okay, thank you. And under privatization, all of those people would no longer be employees of the town, correct?
That would be up to the management company if they'd want to retain any employees or not.
Yeah, my experience with that, and I've been in the business for almost forty years, is that the town would be relinquishing control over their product. Because once you privatize the golf course, that company is going to be making a profit. Sometimes at the expense of the golf course. Sometimes at the expense of the customer and your members, our members. Season pass holders.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Let me, if I can add there, Todd's talking about a lease of the golf course where he is correct. But under a management agreement, you, the town council, set the rates. They work on your behalf, and their fee's a hundred thousand dollars. They then interview all of the existing staff and give them the opportunity to work on their behalf within the management company under their structure. Those employees that opt not to work for the management company are absorbed in the Park and Rec Department activities. The city of Virginia Beach is a clear case of that. And I do want to underscore that while there are few courses, municipal courses, that lease their facilities, which Todd described as to the perils that may happen. Over thirty percent of the twenty-two-hundred municipalities lease their golf course to a third-party management company because of a fringe benefit issue.
So I only have one second. I can't really go on, but I'm going to say you would lose all of your town benefits, correct?
What's that?
Sorry, I'm over time, but you would lose all your town benefits. Any employee of the golf course would lose town benefits if they were no longer an employee of the town. They were.
Yeah, I believe that would be true.
Thank you.
Councillor Parker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I know I missed most of it, but I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. JJ, that I said no to privatization. We had a strong, strong discussion. We had a strong discussion, and I already told you no. I know I was.
Let me clear that up right now, because the head of the council said the same thing. What I didn't say, it was clear that town council was opposed to privatization. What town council was clear on is they wanted the golf course, of those that I talked with, wanted the golf course to be self-sustaining, but clearly privatization was not an option among anybody of the, I think, five I talked with. So let me get that on the record. It wasn't the issue of privatization. It was the golf course was to be self-sustaining, and the capital, to the point of funding the capital, and not a reliance on the general fund.
But that's not what you stated a little while, that's not what you stated a little while ago, so.
Ma'am, I, I beg to differ with you.
I'm sorry?
Beg to differ with you.
Yes, I did say something about self-sustaining. I did say no to privatization. I said I wanted it to be part of the community like it already is. I can understand doing the, if no one shows up for the no-tees, doing that. I'm not for raising the golf course rates as high as they are. This is a community place. I don't want the restaurant privatized. I, this is a community. This is the town's community. This is where people go to golf, people go, have functions there. I don't want it to be limited. And having someone else come in and do something, we're taking away the history of the place. That's my two cents. If it went to that, yes, those town employees, in my mind, would lose out on their benefits, being a town employee going to a private company. Because they're not going to match what the town was giving them. So I'm not comfortable people either losing their jobs or not having a golf course, because people will refuse to go and pay that high rate. So we either have to figure out a way to balance everything out, but I'm not, don't want to balance it out on the taxpayers. It's not fair. That's my two cents. Thank you.
Councillor McRae.
Thank you. Yeah, I think we're all in agreement that we don't want to privatize it. I think JJ just restated that, that was his understanding too. I don't know where that confusion came. But I just have some questions. Thank you for the presentation. What percentage of golfers are residents versus non-residents? Both season pass holders and non-season pass holders? Do we know that?
It's about fifty-fifty.
Fifty-fifty?
Yes.
And the reason I'm looking into that is because I agree with some of the comments that have been made here. I don't think, I totally disagree with the excessive increases of eighteen and thirteen percent for residents. But I could foresee increasing the rates for non-residents to make up some of the shortfall. I'm trying to read my notes here. I have a question on the loyalty cards. Why are they needed? Because they seem to, it seems to exacerbate the losses because they're giving additional discounts upon an additional discount. So what's the purpose of the loyalty card?
May I put a question on that, Mark? The loyalty cards were a concept to wean off of season pass holders. Margaret, Mike, and I had the plan that the season pass, this would be the last year, that season passes would be available. With a season pass, somebody always loses. The person that buys it and doesn't use it, or the person like a, more than a dozen use it, more than a hundred-and-twenty rounds a year, paying five to six dollars a round on shinning. And so the concept is, most of the municipalities, if they offer any kind of program or offering the ability, depending on how frequently you play, the ability to buy for forty-nine, two-forty-nine, or five-forty-nine a cart, it gets you the ability to get ten, twenty, and thirty percent off of every round when it's played. So the net effect of revenue per round, where it's a nineteen percent imbalance between pass holders and the general public, gets narrowed. So the residents still have the opportunity of getting discounts, but not to the magnitude that's currently being experienced.
So we don't have that currently. This was an offer in the event we wanted to reduce season memberships.
It was our suggestion that was negated by the park board and the golf advisory board, that season passes would expire at the end of twelve-thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-five, and that loyalty cards would be introduced during the current golf season. That recommendation of our report has been set aside. Any season pass that's now bought will have a twelve-month period before it expires. The concept of the loyalty cards is still to be determined whether they will be implemented, and they may be at the ten and twenty percent. But I say this sincerely, the golfers are smarter than we are. They know exactly how often they're going to play, and they're going to buy the most cost-effective program that's going to minimize their costs. Our role and responsibility was clear. If we, as a municipality, set the goal that we've got to be economically self-sustaining to fund the capital, what are the programs and rates that we're going to affect to do that? And so I personally am indifferent as to what rates you adopt, with the understanding that to the extent that the rates are lower, then there will be capital required out of the general fund on a continuing basis. And to the extent town council's comfortable with. And to the extent town council's comfortable with that, that's your choice. All we're doing is saying, if that is your choice to be self-sustaining, here's a rate structure that would achieve that. But it's upon you to make the decision, representing all of the citizens of only which run it out of a golfer's flag. And where the golfers have the median income of a hundred and twenty-three thousand of the nine-hundred-and-nine surveyed, what's fair and equitable for all the town residents?
And just to comment, I was not in favor of the eighteen or thirteen percent increases, but I am in favor of increasing. So my thought would be maybe to increase five percent, and maybe over three or four years, get to a more reasonable rate. But I don't think it's fair to do these significant increases in the first year, right off the bat. I also am a huge fan, and I think several other councillors are, you know, to rip the Band-Aid off and get the new point-of-sale system. So I don't know what we need to do. If we need to go sole source, that's fine, but I think that's a no-brainer. In your, in your presentation, you have May first, I think that should be a top priority, and that should be done. There's lots of revenue that can be saved, and I think there's lots of other logistical, operational reasons that that should be done. So I'm not sure, Town Manager Bert, what we can do to expedite that, but I would be in favor of any, any motion that goes on the floor to move forward with the sole source to implement a new point-of-sale system.
Mr. Bert, you want to respond?
Sure, I'll get with our purchasing agent. We do have a adopted policy, so we have to do things per policy, so I'll review that and see what's the quickest. I'm sure there's some things that we can do to shorten some of the steps for duration and time it takes. So I'll look into that and work with IT and Mr. Berry. And I just want to make a comment that I made it clear when I was interviewed, I'm a hundred percent against privatization. I'm not at all in favor of that. We've spent about one-point-five million on the golf course, basically since this, since the mayor came on, and then I have...
Can you repeat that number?
About, about one-point-five million.
Thank you.
And then next year, I have slated five-hundred-and-ten thousand. I upped that, I covered some of the bunker work for two-hundred thousand because I want to plan for paying for the sprinkler system, so I want to start, you know, we'll pick up a little bit here and there, rather than suddenly have to do three million dollars all at once. So that's sort of what I'm working towards.
Yeah, and I was going to also comment, I thought it was actually more than that because I thought we used ARPA dollars. Did that include ARPA dollars?
That includes it.
That includes, okay. Any other comment I would make is I think JJ makes a good point on the need for capital improvement every year, whether that's two-fifty or not. I think it would be a wise idea, maybe this council adopt a, a different fund of, of and on its own, a reserve fund specifically dedicated to the golf course that we can fund annually, in addition to the capital reserve funds. That way we know it's designated to the golf course to make sure we're getting funding necessary for these renovations, you know, for the clubhouse and the other things, so... But thank you for the presentation, very well done, and thanks for your time meeting with me.
Okay, up next, Councilor James.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Berry, if you, you're estimating with these changes, one-point-eight million dollars in revenue, what would be, with, if you, if the rate increases went through, but currently you're a one-point-six, what would be the revenue goal that you would have that would give you the ability to, to do capital improvements and manage your golf course? If you had a number in the, in the world, is it, what would your revenue number be that you're trying to get to, that would give you the money to be self-sustaining?
Well, I think the big hurdle that we're facing is the irrigation system, and that's a once-in-thirty-years, kind of once-in-a-twenty-year investment. You know, the other projects, there's been a number of other projects that have been identified.
I'm just trying to get an idea, is it two-and-a-half million? If your golf course made two-and-a-half million, you'd have enough to pay staff, and I'm just trying to get where...
Oh, you mean on an annual basis, if the golf course...
Yeah, just trying to get where you...
So are you talking about revenue, or what we're netting over our expenses as far as what that goal would be?
No, just, just a general revenue number. If this golf course was sitting in the town, operating without our help, what would, what should it be making? Unless they were going there.
Well, that, that changes every year because you have, all the, all the operational costs go up, all the personnel. So if I said, you know, at, at two million dollars, that would be great. Well, that may be the case for the next year or two, but in three years, our operating expenses could be two-point-one million. And so at that point, revenue wouldn't be covering operating. So that's, it's a moving target.
Okay. So, Mr. Keegan, we have you here. You analyzed this golf course up, down, back, and forth, and can you just give me a point-of-sale system that you would recommend? You said four, but can you just give me one, just so we have a name? That, you know this golf course...
Club Caddy, Club Profit, Flora, Right Speed. There's the four leading vendors in the municipal market.
So, so I wish those were on the recommendation page, that these are the systems. Are those the systems that you're looking at, Mr. Berry?
They will be, yes.
Okay, that's what we want. So I also just took the number that you had from last year's revenue and this year's anticipated revenue, which is about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand higher. I'm just going to, again, encourage you on this point-of-sale system. So at fifty dollars a round, that's five thousand people. So out of all of these people that are, all of these cancellations and no-shows and things, if you were able to capture, I see you shaking your head, but that's okay. If you were able to capture five thousand extra reservations, you would have made up all the costs that you have, and we wouldn't have to raise you at all. So I think it's important to get that number. Even if you get some increase and you have an increase in revenue, you, you could hire another person to go in there and just manage this system. In terms of cancellation and giving people back money, you know, I put things in Amazon shopping cart, and I can put them on and take them off, I can get refunds, I can do everything. Every modern point-of-sale system has this. It's not a, it doesn't necessarily have to have a person do it. It can be, it can be done automatically, be done by the user. Yes, there may be some handholding and stuff, but I just, just as other councillors here, I encourage you to move forward as quickly because even if it's a difficult period over the spring, you can, you know, the benefits of it are going to help you a lot, plus just giving you statistical information on all the other things that you're trying to do. So that's my encouragement, and we'll deal with rates things when we get to the rates there.
Incidentally, I, I was shaking my head because I, I work every Saturday and Sunday morning, and I only see, on average, two no-shows each day in the morning. So I really don't understand where JJ, you're getting the figure that you're quoting, because I'm not seeing it. I'm not seeing that. In the afternoons, yes, we will have maybe three no-shows typically on a day. And so we're not talking about a lot. And normally, on Saturday and Sunday morning, when I get a no-show, I have six singles that are wanting to play. I put a forceman together, and they go right out to the tee. So we don't lose anything. So that's why I was shaking my head.
That's okay.
Respectfully to Todd's position, Notorious and Notified just released a survey calling it a one-billion-dollar problem in the golf industry. The average golf no-show rates, nine percent. It was measured on five-hundred daily fee in municipal golf courses. And so I'm sympathetic to what Todd is saying. It's contrary to the evidence within the industry, based on a report I'll provide Mark in the morning. You can actually go to our website and you see the report and the webinar that was just conducted two weeks ago. The average no-show rate in the country is nine percent, costing the average course over a quarter of a million dollars.
But the thing is, we don't have the software to show it. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. So, so my encouragement is, let's modernize, let's come up to date, let's have a system that will work for us, and let's, then we'll know. But it definitely seems, could be better than what we're doing at the moment, so.
Councilor Burland.
Thank you. Again, as I stated before my time ended, the meeting you had, I was not part of, so I definitely was not part of that group of people, the comments that you made, so I just didn't want you to speak broadly about councillors. I did attend the golf task group. I'm not a voting member, I can just listen and comment on things. And there I did say to Mark Berry, we needed, we need an updated system. And I said, why don't you guys start looking now? I said in that meeting, like, we definitely have to get on the, on the board and get that up and running. The other thing, though, is looking at, I can, I can support a modest increase, but I cannot support a large increase that I'm seeing. I think that we need to get our systems in place, which will help capture some of that lost revenue, and that will be, that will make it so that the extra costs that we're trying to gain will be put on the backs of the people trying to play and enjoy the facilities. Which brings me to my next point, the pro shop. Every pro shop I go to, people, they have like rotten, sun-dried capital, like, you know, like golf course, more souvenirs, the structure, we make no money on the pro shop as a town. Is that correct?
That's part of my, that's part of my compensation.
But I'm just asking, as a town, we make no money on the pro shop. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So that structure is very outdated. I mean, not saying, you know, I'm not saying what you're doing is wrong, but people, as people retire down the road, they're moving to a different structure, because it should be a gift shop in the sense where you can go in and buy souvenirs and things for people, and our town should be making some revenue. So eventually, we should really look at that down the road as to how we can make that pro shop be a financial asset to the golf course. So I guess to JJ, how much usually pro shops that are not structured this way, I mean, is this a very common structure or uncommon structure?
The structure you're under is antiquated, where the golf pro owns a pro shop. It became out of favor perhaps ten to fifteen years ago. But I'm going to defend Todd here, is that the physical structure of the space that he has available within the clubhouse is not very appealing, and that his ability to properly put in women's apparel, and there's not enough square footage there to run a shop, the, and so therefore, the revenue that he's generating is appropriate for the nature of the physical facility he has. Having said that, I completely agree with you. In a different facility and building, some pro shops can do upwards of a million dollars. We're talking of the high-end daily fee, the high-end municipal golf courses. If you said to me, what would be a fair target, especially if you had a range where Todd could go out and do custom fitting of clubs and sell those, you'd be looking in the quarter of a million dollar revenue range. But in Todd's defense, he doesn't have the physical structure to train, teach, to sell clubs, and the physical limitations on the space he has is a challenge.
Right. But... Yeah, and, and just in general, though, we are just making no revenue from our pro shop, even if we had the, even if he had all the space. So it's just, if, maybe that's something we should look at, should he have a different space, and should there be some merchandise in there that's town-owned that we're selling, right? That with the new software system, it could be town-emblemmed stuff or things like that. I don't know. Or maybe we should have a separate shop with town souvenirs, like mugs and things that are helping generate, generate revenue, sweatshirts. People like to get gifts from their hometown. Being from your home life, playing at, you know, running across, you know, that area and living here, I have friends that come back. Mrs. Meany's in the audience, I graduated with her son, and, you know, she's reached out to me. I just think the, putting an increase the way we are on the backs of the seniors before nine, I don't know what we're gaining. It doesn't look like a large figure to me at all. That, to me, needs to just go away. But that's under another structure that we'll talk about. I think we just need to get into the 21st century with our, with our infrastructure and our expectations of how we want to manage, and I think we're going to see things change once we do that. But I do not support a large percent increase on our taxpayers. I just won't support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Parker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Okay. Mr. Berry, Mr. Todd, I'm so sorry, I'm drawing a blank on your name. Eric, Mr. Eric, thank you guys for coming, and Mr. JJ. My question is about the seasonal pass. Do you guys, actually, I'm going to put it towards you guys. Do you guys want it to go away?
Let me answer it for him, the answer's no.
I didn't. Okay. I was waiting for you to respond.
No.
So...
No, I don't.
Okay.
No. We have a special relationship with our season pass holders and the club. It's a town entity. It's a, it's a municipal golf course, but it's very well-respected, always in the top five in the state for municipal golf courses. It is a Donald Ross course, which I, I think is the reason why we don't see the number of no-shows that JJ speaks of, because we are a very much in-demand golf course. And, and no, I, no, what we have is, is very special at the golf course. The golf course, the product that Eric puts out, the golf course itself, our, our restaurant is so stable, it is, it is unbelievable, JJ, you can speak to this, but to have a food and beverage facility that has lasted for thirty-five years is almost unheard of in the golf business, no?
Yeah, the par four is exceptional. It's like Cheers. You've got a building development fund that's apart from the golf enterprise fund, and if I was in control of all the money, I'd be out getting money out of the business development fund to renovate the clubhouse. It is a huge community asset. The views and distance, and the ability to be a town center with great food and beverage, meaning what par four does, they do a very nice job. They're dealing with a very antiquated structure, but it's a very special place. Todd would both agree with that, right? In terms of the community, it's like the Cheers bar.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, we are, we're a community bar, well, the restaurant, the par four is a community bar. It is. Yeah, our, our residents.
Best, best chicken parm in the entire area.
To Todd's point, the vast majority of municipalities, because of the liquor liability, if there's anything they contract out, it's the restaurant. I don't know the specific number, but I would speculate it's over eighty percent of municipal golf courses, the food and beverage operation is run by a concessionaire because of the liquor liability issue.
John Sillsby, our boss before Mark, he was in North Tonawanda, he was, he oversaw a twenty-seven-hole facility. And he told me, and we were talking about this very thing, and he said that he was there, he was director for twenty-seven years, and in twenty-seven years, he had twenty food and beverage concessionaires, twenty of twenty-seven.
Thank you. So what are your thoughts? What are you looking for? Because as a town council, we have our ideas, but you guys are the experts. And yes, Mr. JJ has brought forth something, but what are you two looking for?
Well, we met with the Golf Advisory Board and the Parks and Rec Commission together and came up with a recommendation to the council. So that is what I'm suggesting we do, with maybe, from what I'm hearing tonight, possibly a couple tweaks. But I believe that should be the foundation for how we move forward with the rate structure.
So my thoughts are, go back and relook at some things, if you can. Just to, just so there's not too much of a burden on the people. Like you said, it's a community, and tough times are get ready, come, and if, enjoy, I, I live next to a golf course, so I know how many people go out there. So, and sometimes I can hear them out there, so it's a good thing. I don't mind it. This is such a community, and I don't want them to turn and go somewhere else. Thank you. All right, I'm just gonna, I, I don't see any of the hands. Anybody else want to speak? All right. I'm going to sort of wrap this up in a whole package for you. What I'm hearing is, people are saying they don't want privatization. I will then say for myself, I would take this, probably this presentation to you, some thoughts and ideas that are in here, maybe take some of them, which I don't see where it truly spills out, all the exact things you want to do to, like, fix at the golf course, because things were mentioned to me that I don't even know if you need, or if you really want, or if it's just wants, you know? Because it, it does say here, hold...
Because it, it does say here, hole through one through 18 and phase one through six, and I don't even know what that consists of, short game, irrigation system, contingency, design engineering and all that stuff. So figure out what you're looking for, maybe reimagine this thing in your head of how you want this to be, because this is my new word, basically, because reimagine, we may have to do a lot of that. But, um, and then, even when we get to the next spot on the pricing, and we'll talk about that in a few minutes, but me personally, I agree, go back, work on this stuff again. Come back and like, figure out exactly what your, your expenses are, how you can figure out some revenue stuff. And while I appreciate this, this presentation, did you actually ask him to come in for this to look towards like privatization or did you? What was your, what were you actually asking for this contractor to do for you?
The goal was to do a complete analysis of the golf course, which they did, look for opportunities for improvement, look for challenges that we're facing, and come up with ways to address them. And I think he's done all of those things.
Okay. No, I'm just, um, and do we think, do you think you can take things out of here and make it more local to our town of Groton on how you can do this instead of privatizing?
Yeah, and I'm not advocating for privatization, I'm just saying that was something that was thrown out. I, I wasn't going to tell him, oh, don't talk about that, because, you know, I don't want to channel him in one direction or another, he just needs to look at all the, all the opportunities. Some we may embrace, others we won't, but that, that's his job.
But you can take this and make it sort of...
Oh, yeah, I mean, we can definitely take the recommendations and prioritize, right.
Okay.
Yeah, and there's some things that aren't going to happen and, you know, there's others that we can begin to implement.
All right. I mean, there was even an article in the paper about this, a sports reporter wrote about it, I mean...
Apparently, he didn't contact any of us, but I, I heard there was something in the paper, yeah.
Even he was, I guess he had spoken to some golfers and I guess a lot of golfers like it the way it is, sort of. I think there needs to be some improvements, don't get me wrong, but, so, I thank you and thank you for the presentation, and I think we can maybe take some things out of this and apply it to our, our golf course, but thank you so much.
Thank you for the opportunity, y'all, have a good night.
Thank you, good night.
Thanks, JJ.
All right. So I'm going to announce that Counselor Parker has arrived at 8:42, and then also make an announcement that Counselor Dan Gajewski has won in the Groton State Representative election this evening with an unofficial, unofficial results of 66% for Danielle Gajewski and 34% for Rob Morris, that's unofficial results. And I would personally like to thank, and I think our council, thank you for both participating in our electoral process and good luck in Hartford and make, you make Groton proud. All right, up next, 2025-179, setting Shenacostet Golf Course 2025 rates. This in our packet is on page 296, let me get that. All righty. All right, um, Counselor Pacino, you want to make that motion?
Yes. I was just looking for my glasses, they're on my face. Okay. Motion to recommend a resolution approving the proposed 2025 golf course rates. This is item 2025-179, setting the Shenacostet Golf Course 25 rates. So moved.
Second.
Go by Pacino, seconded by Jones. Before we get, dig into this, I would just like to ask the council and take a little survey, because you've heard what we've sort of said, and I don't know if these rates are going to basically apply, and we could sit here for the next hour and tweak and talk and, and I'm asking this council, would we like to send them back and have them, probably work them over and come back to us?
Yes.
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 Would somebody like to make a motion to send it back to committee?
I'll make that motion to send it back to the golf advisory committee as well as Park and Rec, right? Is it both of them?
We would have to, the next golf advisory board meeting isn't until April, so we would have to have a special meeting to, in order to, and the current process is, it starts at the golf advisory board, then it goes to the Parks and Rec Commission. We have a Parks and Rec Commission meeting tomorrow night, so it, it could be a month before we're back, and that creates some challenges, because right now, we're holding off on selling passes because we don't have rates yet.
So you want us to set the rates tonight? You want us to come up with numbers? Because I don't think they're going to...
I, I guess I'd like the opportunity to...
It's going to be a long discussion.
Yes, well, maybe not. I guess I'd like the opportunity to go back and adjust the rates. It would certainly expedite the whole process if the council could give us, like, we're comfortable with 7% or we want to see 3%. And I do want to share one bit of information, so, so over the past 13 years, from 2012 to 2025, the Shenacostet's operating costs have mirrored inflation at approximately 37%. So over that time span, inflation is about 37%. Adjustments to season passes and daily rates in that same timeframe are 12% lower than the inflation rate. So I think that's something to keep in mind when we come with a proposal and we're suggesting these rates. We have historically lagged behind what it's, our expenses, and so we're trying to make that correction, not all in one, not all in one step. I mean, what we've proposed doesn't get us up to what the inflation has been. But I, so I just want to point that out when, you know, historically, we were working on a model from recommendations from 2003, and the recommendation was 3% every year, and that's what we always came with, was 3%, and no one bad at an eye, well, we should have been looking a little bit closer because we were falling behind, so I just want to share that.
All right, I can take a survey and we can sort of feel like how people, where people are. But I also remember you coming to us and saying you were trying to grow your attendance at the golf course, that there were problems back then, so there was reasons why I remember back then.
Right, and, and we have taken a couple...
And now you seem to have more than you need. You have, what this presentation said was that you, you know, you had more clients than, like, you should.
Well, yeah, so we have grown the number of season pass holders, and the current reservation system, a majority of the season pass holders get to prime times because they can sign up a day in advance. So one of the things that we're talking about is moving away from that so that everybody has an equal opportunity. Being a season pass holder doesn't give you the privilege of, or the benefit, it shouldn't give you the benefit of being able to sign up early. That's like buying a ski pass, you know? My wife bought a ski pass, that doesn't mean she's the first, she gets to be the first person on the chairlift, she doesn't get to take the first run. The benefit is, the more times she goes skiing, the less it costs per trip. That's the benefit of a season pass holder. But we've made an adjustment a couple of years ago and are, there's been some collateral damage because we've seen an increase in the number of season pass holders, which is great, but we've also seen a drop off in greens fees, and greens fees are where we make our revenue, not all of it, but we make a sizable proportion. So when the greens fees start to drop off, we're not making as much money, and we've seen that this fiscal year.
All right, so let's just, everybody take, we'll take a turn, I'm just going to jump in here first. If you want to change more or less or however you want to do this, come up with like reimagine some things that might work better for you, try and do that, come up with different scenarios. But me, I think maybe, and I'm just going to throw this out there because I'm not actually sure how this is going to work, but I'm thinking more of like, the residents should maybe go up between five and seven, and maybe with the carts, because, and if it's, like you're saying, there's a certain group that comes at it in the morning and they're more senior than other people, maybe we don't go up in the carts for them, I don't know. And that potentially, non-residents, let's go up like 15% over the price of the residents' fees. So if you're going to increase residents by 5%, take their total and then add another 15% to that and make that the non-resident fees. Make it so that people that are coming to our community are going to pay for it, because the little map in there shows people coming from all kinds of different states, they're traveling here, and trust me, people are traveling, they're willing to pay. So that's my thought, that they can pay at higher rates, they can make up for some of this, because they want to come to your course for some reason that there's, they've heard about and they're coming here for that reason, or they're visiting and they want to play, so they're coming there. And usually when you're on vacation, you're willing to spend more. So put it on the people that don't live here, don't, like, I get there has to be increases and I get that, but make it smaller on the residents and much larger on the non-residents, because my thought is, it's Groton, it's our Groton Golf Course, and we take care of our residents first. And come up with something that works for you on taking care of our seniors, like you say, go there quite a bit, and then hopefully you'll find some kind of software issue that, or software solution. So that's what I'm saying, reimagine it and think like that, I don't know. Let's start, um, let's start on this side today. Counselor Parker, what do you think? What are your thoughts?
Between five and seven.
For residents?
For residents.
Everybody or just residents?
Residents, between five and seven, and an increase for the others, I was just doing some numbers, because at one point, there's 18.75% for somebody and that's a resident, so I'm not comfortable with that. I can see maybe a 15% increase for the non-residents, so it's half, a little bit higher, but it gives us something to think about.
Okay.
I'm okay with 5% to 10% for residents, and then, like you said, a significant amount about that for non-residents, our residents should not be paying the same amount. I understand the fact that we need to start getting higher, we can't just do it all at once, and an 18% increase for residents is not...
Counselor Parker? Yeah, I agree, as I said earlier, I, I agree, I think 5% for town, but I wouldn't be willing to possibly modify that if I knew what the last couple of years were increases. I know you mentioned the past 13 years, but I'd like to know what the past three years were, but I'm in the 5% favor, and I think your increase for out-of-town non-residents is 12%, 9.6%, so I think, as the mayor indicated, I would be favorable for 15% for non-residents, and no change in cart fees, and I think the point-of-sale system should be up.
Oh, yes, can I say one more thing? Quick. I'm sorry. I, I do understand that if people have, are season pass holders and they don't come for a tee time, there should be some sort of a penalty for that. I think everybody should have a penalty for not having, not showing.
Or everybody pays upfront, and if you don't show, it's like the movie ticket, you don't get a refund.
But if you're a season pass holder, you've paid upfront.
Oh, gotcha. Counselor Jones?
I would, I just did an average of all the rates and, you know, that you presented, and it's 13.2, with some of them being 3 and some of them being 44.9. I'm assuming that a lot of youth, some of these high percentages are on the youth and they probably, I don't know whether they, they golf or they don't golf, but I'm in agreement with the mayor and other counselors, I think the five to seven on residents and the 15 on non-residents, and just all steam forward on a point-of-sale system and modernize that and get good statistics and, and charge, you know, have, you, you make a reservation, you put a credit card in, you pay, and if you don't show up, then that's, that's on you.
And, and as you know, when people are doing this from their computer, there are required fields to fill out, so you can get all the data you need, because you can't go to the next screen unless you fill out all the data.
Right, so I would, yeah, big emphasis on modernizing this system and put it in as, as quickly as you can, it seems like the whole RFP process seems just onerous and you need this up and running immediately. And then again, the five to seven residents, non-residents, 15 and...
Over that number, yeah.
Over that number. I don't have any real opinion on cart fees, so...
Thanks. Counselor Pacino?
I like the idea, thank you, Madam Mayor, I like the idea of 5% for the town residents and make up the difference for the non-residents, whatever that may be, it'd be, you know, 10, 15 or whatever that may be. Definitely the POS system is, is something we, I think we need that we can catch data on, and maybe some kind of a grandfathering thing for some, you know, I don't know how that would work, you know, with grandfathering pricing for current season, but ticket holders, I don't know how that would work, I'm just throwing it out there. And I had something else on the top of my head, it just disappeared, like my hair. So that's it, that's all I got.
Okay, Counselor Portman?
Um, I just am in full support, as I've stated already earlier on at some of those task force meetings, and updating the software system, I think that will alleviate a lot of problems, hopefully bring in some revenue. And looking for other ways, I brought up at the task force, is looking for some sponsors. Some other golf courses have tried to reach out to like the EBS, the Pizzers, the Dominions, and some of those places have donated to other golf courses and stuff, so, I know I asked Mr. Berry at the thing, I said, has anyone, you know, any benches, any, like, people, sometimes you have people that are wanting to do it in memory of a former person that maybe has passed that used to play there and might buy a, a bench or something, you know, like, there's other ways to kind of market this to bring in some revenues, and I don't think we are doing that, you know, and if we're not doing a bad job, we're just not doing it, and I think that's something we could start to implement as far as like reaching out to like sponsors, like the, the bigger corporations, you know, getting it up on our website, updating our websites as well, you know, get it out there, get us on the map. I mean, you would have missed it, you see nothing about the Groton Golf Course, Shenacostet, like, we need some advertising down there, let people know. As far as percents, I think the community should be aware, you should be looking at like a three or five-year prediction of how you want to increase, so if this year for residents is five, maybe next year, you know, you might be somewhere around six or seven, right, like, like kind of get to a point where you're slowly phasing in the increase, but I definitely think residents are, we're already paying for capital improvements and other things, residents are already paying that in taxes to help keep the golf course going, so their percent should definitely be less than outside residents. So I can support like a 5% to 8% increase for residents, non-residents maybe somewhere between eight and 15 increase. I also think that we should be looking across the board when looking at the grid that we were given, some places, as it said, Mr. Jones said, you know, some are higher than others, why, if you're going to make a raise, why is it some things are 20%, some are 10%, some are 40? I, depending on where you fall in that pendulum, you're going to find it unfair, so I think we need to be consistent, and I did hear also at the meeting that you said season pass holders, you guys were thinking about not taking anymore, so we, we have to find a way to figure that out, but I definitely, definitely, definitely think late fees have to be a priority. I don't care if you're a season pass holder or not, you don't show, fee, and then that should be effective immediately this season, that there's going to be late fees on that. And there should be a time, is it 15 minutes, 20, like, you know, what, so you can sell it. One of the benefits of going to the software system is, as soon as that, that spot is not taken, someone can tap right in and say, ooh, the spot opened, turns green even, like, whatever, and they can take that spot and get right in there. So I encourage you guys to come back, but again, I, I just think it needs to be modest increase on our residents, we shouldn't be overtaking them all at once.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Merritt?
I'll go along with the 5% to 7% increase, and I'd like to make one mention about some of the facilities, and to let you know that the clubhouse is very antiquated, and we don't even, we've only started digging into it and we don't even know what's on the other end of it. So that's just a speculation to put money on, but the increase in the fees, we could go along with that for right now.
Okay.
Mr. Berry, feeling good with direction here? Do you have any questions?
Crystal clear.
Crystal clear.
All right.
Thank you.
All right.
I have one, I have one more, I'm sorry, I had one more note on here, I apologize.
What's that?
Is there a difference between your senior residents versus non-residents?
On, on the season backs?
In general, just rates in general?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, just want to make sure that there...
Historically, we would increase the, the non-resident rate, and then we would give the resident a 10% discount off of that. So that's how we have always done that. So yes, there is, there is a, there has always been typically a 10% difference between the non-resident and the resident.
Question?
Councilor Merritt.
And what you've done has been agreeable with all the golfers? Resident and non-resident?
Yes.
No more questions?
All right, are we, we didn't get a second yet. Do you want to put forward your motion now to send it back?
Make a motion to send it back to the Parks and Rec Golf Advisory Committee.
Second.
Second?
Nope, I said that wrong, didn't I? Let me rephrase that.
However you said it, second.
I'm withdrawing.
It's the golf, it starts at the Golf Advisory Board, yes.
Let me rephrase that, I make a motion to send it back to the Golf Advisory.
Second. What? I have a motion by Parker, seconded by Pacino. It's been a long night of golf here. Woo! All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, I guess it's going back. That's now eight to zero to zero. We'll see you in the future.
Yes, we will.
Thank you, thank you. Bring us back some good numbers and make everybody happy. We don't want to get ugly letters and emails.
Thank you.
All right, up next, 2025-115, Emergency Management Performance Grant, EMPG, two, for year '24 through '25. This is on page 318 of our packet. Who's next? Councilor Merritt, want to take that one?
Hmm, as soon as I find it.
It's on page 318.
And we have a motion on 2025-115, Emergency, Emergency Management Performance Grant. Motion to recommend a resolution accepting the grant funding in the amount of $18,939 and to authorize Town Manager John Burt to act on behalf of the Town of Groton, including executing any and all documents and to perform all acts and things deemed necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of the grant program and to refer the item to the RTM per Rule 6.5.3.
Second. Moved by Merritt, seconded by Rusk. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Looks like you brought a crowd with you.
They came on their own. They may have a vested interest in some discussions tonight.
Maybe.
But that's not what I believe they're here for. I'm here for the, right now, for the Emergency Management Performance Grant. This is a grant that I've come before you be, in, in prior years. It's an annual grant that we get, it's allocated through the Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security. It's a matching grant where the town puts up funds, the state gives matching grants for it. It's used for salary reimbursement as part of our emergency management function. So I, I highly recommend that the council accepts this. It's money that we're eligible for, based on a calculus that's done by Demus. So I certainly recommend you accept it, or authorize the town manager to accept it.
Okay. Councilor Portilone.
Thank you, thank you for coming today, and this one, to me, is a no-brainer. It's money, like, accept it.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Councilor Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Chief. In our current existence that we have now in our country, do you have any faith you're going to get this money?
I suppose we'll get this money. I, you, I don't have any information that you don't have, or we don't watch on TV, so I'm assuming that we will get this money.
Do you have sort of an estimate when it would normally be released?
Later, I don't think it starts until after July 1st, so it won't be later in the fiscal year.
And does the town match this, once you have the money in hand? If you don't get the money, then we don't?
We match it, it's part of our budget. We budget for it, so the money's already there.
Okay. Yeah, I know, I'm in total favor of it, I just worry about actual delivery.
Can't answer that for you.
Yep, okay. To, to be determined. Okay, thank you.
Councilor Pacino.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Piggybacking off Council Jones, the matching funds that we would be matching, would that change if the federal funds didn't come through? Would, would we still match what came through, or are we still looking to...
Well, we wouldn't have access to those funds. So theoretically, we would be $18,000 less, almost $19,000 less.
Okay, so we'd, we'd still match what we think you should have gotten? Okay.
I, I would, I would guess that these mon, monies will be available.
I hope your guess is right.
All right, thank you, I'm good.
Councilor Portilone.
Thanks, and just as, with the other one that you brought before us, just for the record for the people at home that probably are questioning everything, that it's not like, and if you don't get this, then we put forward, like, you're not going to start spending until you receive it, so if, God forbid, you didn't receive it.
It's salary offset, so that's, it's already...
Yeah.
You know, we, we do budget for certain things.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, I see no more hands, so we're going to take a vote on this? And I really hope it passes and that you get all the money. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, that passes eight to zero to zero. All right, up next. It's 10, you know what, I think it's, it's 10:05. Do you know where your town councillor is tonight? So we're going to take a vote to continue our meeting right now, because it's 10 o'clock and we have to do this, it's council roll. And they are crossing their fingers because they've been here for a while. So, are we all in favor of continuing to go forward?
Yes.
Anybody who doesn't want to? Not hearing anybody, so we're going to go forward. All right, so we're...
Madam Mayor, before you do a motion, I believe the chief wants to add Deputy Chief Gaitley into the executive session.
Okay. Got it. Is it my turn? All right, so up next is 2025-196, Pending Collective Bargaining Agreement Negotiations, Executive Session. This is on page 320 of our packet. We are adding Deputy Gaitley to the reading. Councilor Parker's going to read it, and I also, after we pass it, I do want to take a 10-minute recess to get set up for executive session and take a little break before we actually start our business. So I just want the public to know that. Councilor Parker.
I make a motion, I hereby move that the members of the town council, along with Town Manager John Burt, Human Resources Director Arneisha Green, Town Attorney Kristi Kelly, Police Chief Louis Fazaro, and Deputy Chief Paul Gaitley go into executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 100 dash, 1-200, Friends Two and Friends for the Purpose of Discussing Strategy and/or Negotiations With Respect to the Collective Bargaining Unit, I so move.
Second.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Pacino. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, going into executive session, that passes eight to zero to zero. And it is 10:07, and we will start executive session about 10 minutes from now at 10:17. Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
Sent it us up.
Whoa.
We're good?
In progress.
Okay, I think it's about, what is that, 11:06 and we are back. Okay, we have a motion to read. Counselor Gajewski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I hereby move that the Town Council Committee of the whole vote to recommend to the Town Council that it approve the request for funds necessary to implement the agreement between the town and the Groton Police Union Local Number 3428 AFASME, AFL-CIO for the term July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2028. So moved.
Second.
Pacino.
Move by Gajewski, second by Pacino. All right. Seeing no comments, we're going to take a vote on this. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, before you do that. I have not called the numbers yet. Hold one second. That passes eight to zero, I mean, sorry, nine to zero to zero. And Counselor Gajewski arrived at about 10:07 PM, right when we were leaving the council to go into our break prior to executive session. So he did attend executive session. Okay?
Motion adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion by Boardland, seconded by Russk. All right, motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. That passes nine to zero to zero. It is 10:08 PM.
Ten, eleven.
11:08 PM. Thank you, everybody.